People call our sound, if you're ready to sound announcement for the number twelve. And they should be ordered at six P M. I just have been being funny by scout even Tasia. Drew three twenty four, not as Jimmer. Come on, leave us an app. Uh, Nancy, where do it? Fun, um, if you'll just come up. Go into the podium, provide your name and address.
Can we wait till the like best project?
You can refer to the like best project if you'd like, yeah, just all of them today.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, I mean, same sort of angle.
I thought that we were signed up for.
Not a problem. Gay lengths.
The same.
Thank you. Mr. Spears, John.
John Spears, four, six, four, three, one, two, three, up here. I'm only after one for you. We've been kind of going back and forth to the church. Gate in the back and the gate is open every day. Anybody opens it, it's not a lot.
Including the night front.
I've I've lived there for twenty six years, um, and lived in one hundred sixty two years. But the deal is that the gate is always open. And I've closed that gate. Hundred times or more. I don't know my person. I know I mentioned the Duke first, or somebody, that's been at least eight months ago. Please keep that gate closed. We would prefer it be closed. And then I see these emails coming out where, oh, no, we're gonna take the gate down. We don't need that gate anymore. So and we were almost to that point where Dorf, he kind of spoke in all of a sudden, said, oh, the residents prefer not to have that gate open at any time. So my understanding is the gate should be closed except for on Sundays, so in services. During the signal encounter. I think it was Troy Smith, um, Troy Smith said that, um. He doesn't think anybody goes out of that door. Then they should have it open all the time. Maybe they were moving the gate. So that's when it turned out something a little bit. Today, they opened the gate. At least a hundred cars before noon went out that gate or in that gate. So nobody uses that gate. That's not true. I prefer it to be closed all the time. Not even, I think now that the church has gotten so big, maybe they don't even open on Sundays. We don't need that traffic in our residential area. We prefer not that thing. Uh, at least I would prefer not to have it. And I think it's a lot of people that need to pop on this as well. Appreciate you listening. Any questions?
John, how many cities have they had? Hundred departments at this point?
Yeah, just this morning, I was saying. Is it? Our opponent got signs. They got they got probably two hundred, three hundred.
Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Sundays, I suspect.
You could say it's not a church.
You'll get your opportunity when you're having a microphone, because otherwise we can't get on our records. Um, John, so. Those are the, because there's a, Rob, there's some type of agreement that we have with the church based on long before any of us were here. That street was closed.
Yeah, I talked to Brad this evening. We need to see what was approved and what was not approved and what the intent was during that council meeting when it was approved. To see what that gate was for and what any agreements have been made subsequent to when they were approved. Um, I'm also going to be setting up a meeting with, uh, Mr. Spears, myself, and then representatives of the, uh, church. So try to figure out, you know, what's going on, how to hear it and go from there.
How's the parking now that improved? Up and down the street?
Up and down the street.
On forest.
Well, this last Sunday, I'm not sure, maybe the parking lot might have been closed for Veterans Day or something, but they borrowed their hall down the street that Sunday morning as well. I think they got around your spot a little bit. Um, and I'd like to teach them on their side.
Yeah, we'll take a look and, like I said, we'll meet with us. We appreciate that if you can represent.
And I will also think that any of the other people that want to meet should be invited as well. Like I said, I'm speaking for myself. Put this together and said, we're gonna stay with the town council or anything. We're just, we were tired of the traffic. And during the week. It's really bad. So that's Sundays. I mean, come on, Sunday.
I'm surprised anybody can get through there right now. It's so soft there.
You'd be surprised if my vehicles make it up and down that hill on a day of the day. I had to dig out for them. The last month, my house. Well, that that's the new town. I'm just talking about my house. But yeah, it's interesting how, uh. Or 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 the the water flow coming from downtown, where we didn't build any retention ponds for the for the parking lot, we just let everything go down the street and out. And 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 I I can probably look at my neighbor behind me, the rude, her yard is flooded. After the storm of any type of storm. And you know what happened to the rest of it? Yeah, um, yeah, or. Or collect it somewhere. Um, I don't know.
Well, six one broad that time.
Well, yeah, like I say, I'm trying to stay on point with the one thing right now, in case people.
Sounds good. And then there'll be similar people up the shares.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Yes, I definitely. Good to see y'all. Is this your location over here? All right, the standard sixty open on three in the town of Wintermere. And I prepare remarks so that I don't mess up any of my numbers here. So as a parent of two growers and supporter of all growers at Orlando Area Growing Society, Oars. I'm here to advocate for a sacred crosswalk between the parking lot of Wintermere Elementary and the Oars Gold House on the O U S wire road property. Oars coaches and parents are very hard to raise healthy, respectful and mindful athletes. These kids and their coaches are dedicated and attract a large growing program. Although our growers are mostly aware when they need to crossing from the parking lot to the boat house. They can remain concerned given the number of kids and the times when they use that crossing. Currently, we have one hundred and forty five high schoolers who practice from four to six thirty P M. Every weekday. And from seven thirty to ten thirty on Saturdays. Additionally, we have an average of thirty five middle schoolers practicing each weekday. And also on Saturdays. That all makes for a lot of crossing. That's a very busy time. Those are all around rush hours, you can imagine. And now those crossings are happening in the dark at the end of weekday practices. So a lot of the Oars parents and the coaches have been asking for a beacon at that, like our crosswalk beacons. Uh, I know that the town has recently installed a new beacon at the crosswalk of tenth and main. And it has the runner that often uses that crossing. Thank you all for that. I appreciate that. Um, I hope the beacons are not inexpensive and that the town has a project series that has competing priorities. So funds for another beacon for the Oars Crosswalk might be car off. However, I'm asking tonight, if funding source is available, please prioritize a beacon for that wire park roundabout. It probably receives more pedestrian traffic than just about any other location in town. And as I just stated, those numbers on a daily basis, they have practiced every single day except for Sunday. Um, I also know with that new beacon that was just installed in tenth and main, there's another crosswalk signal that's half a block up from it. Maybe that couldn't be relocated over to, you know, as a temporary solution to a new beacon purchase. That would be very, anything to assist would be really helpful. We do have parents that sit out there and help and they wear little vests and everything and they try to enough it, but as a driver, I'm aware of that traffic. And if I ever want to stop out with a multi kid, I feel like, and they're, those kids are mindful, but they still insist this, so. Um, I know that a lot of those kids would like to be here right now. They're doing some sort of hellish thing called a six state protest as I speak, so they can't make it tonight, but they all thank you. Any questions? I can answer.
I do have a question because I have the word there and I can that all the time. I was one year maybe hit. The parent was standing, he wasn't even in the crosswalk area. He was sitting in the grass with the dust. And, um, but would a light help especially this time? Well, because I have a light there. It's very dark.
Yeah, I think anything could assist, you know, I mean, ideally, it would be something with flashing that they can press. And there is one, like I said, that might be able to be located. I don't know when that goes.
That one's antiquated. It's coming down.
That's why I almost got hit one day because I thought it was flashing and you don't pay attention. But anyway, so yes, anything with this, you know, I mean, I would love, I know that there are some other areas under consideration for some of those installations of the beacon lights that we've seen. Um, if we could get bumped up, like I said, those numbers, I've got to think that that's gotta be one of the biggest, that's very news.
I say that again, sorry. But while we're in the way, I have some part of this for all of us. They probably do. I think one of the things that, so we made sure that we put four lights and that around the bounce of the missiles. Well, lit as possible now. So let's start.
Yeah, I am. I am. That's why I'm saying the problem, so.
Required to, you want to hit the floor and obviously it does. Right at the mercy of the electric. Makes sense for us, uh, because they're direct connect. Does spores have any funds that they would be willing to match the town funds to do something?
Yeah, um, so maybe do some kind of a capital drive or something, you know, like with with the parents or whatever, but, um. You're, it's a small organization and our coaches are, you know, kind of. Honestly, the coaches, the coaching staff has to have multiple jobs to handle more things. So I have the question for.
The issue, the issue becomes, you know, that program has grown exponentially, the same footprint.
Yeah.
Um, at the same time, traffic is growing exponentially as well. Um, Rob, I, I think. It's not as simple as just putting up a crosswalk at your study.
Yeah, we can include that in the golf cart assessment as well to take a look at where the crossings are and where pedestrian passing will add as well. So. We can take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, they, please, could you talk to them and talk about maybe some sort of capital drive? I mean. I know that they're limited on fines and stuff, but I also know there's supposed to be forty, fifty thousand dollars. You know, so it's not a cheap school either. So and you guys got three hundred kids in there now, counting the middle schoolers?
Oh, and that's it's probably two hundred, but yeah, and the master, the master.
It's it's a big ticket too. So I think, you know, an idea of maybe a little, a little contribution on both sides could go a long ways. Trying to make this happen.
Absolutely.
Maybe we'll hold some kind of event.
And.
But any, yes, I understand. I'll I'll bring that message back, but I think.
Work together honestly.
And L R P would consider it in their prioritization. Um, Councilman David, are you?
I was, but it's harder to talk.
I'm not. I'm already.
Yeah, 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 I don't have any in my experience, but I'm sure it will.
Okay, well, if there is a prioritization, let's see those locations. If a study could be done to assess the actual usage and the pedestrian flow on there. I think that, you know, like I said, I I truly believe that I I'm all over these streets all the time running. I think most of everyone can see me. Um, so I I feel like I have a good sense of where pedestrian crossing that we need.
Well, yeah, so is is that knowledge and local knowledge? Plus, if we're able to combine that. Particular study with an additional study that we're gonna save. Those studies can be certain or they're not inexpensive. They cost about as much as the.
As the lights.
Apparates. And so it's about a forty thousand dollar. Situation, uh, to solve.
Okay, what's the cost of the lights across?
Uh, so.
Thousand now.
Ish, yeah.
Twenty four to twenty eight thousand these days on the, yes, yes. And what, but that's for a standard crosswalk. We have to remember this is at a roundabout. So there may be different apparatus necessary for this.
Because you have to see.
Mm hmm.
That's why we have to study that. Is part of making sure people are ready. Sound, otherwise we end up putting the town in additional liability and worse than you would have done nothing. So it's a shame that that's the way it works. So we gotta make sure we check all the blocks.
They will be pleased to ask a knowledge from us. So I I appreciate you and thank you.
We're happy to talk to them too as well, but definitely if we can work on something together, let's see.
I'll bring that back to you. That'd be fantastic for me. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all your work on the basement as well. And Tommy, I don't know if you understand, so.
Yes, I've actually reached out to them three or four times and they got back to me last week to say they were going to look into what the schedule was to get that. Downlight repaired and moved. Is it just laying there?
Yeah. Yes, it was very good. Certainly, I wanted to, let's say, so, um. I'll reach out to the representative. Basically, great relationship. Probably been a few, three months. Miss Sue Ellen. Who is that?
Hi, everybody. My name's Sue Ellen Novy. I've been here thirty four years, three twenty eight Forest Street. The gate of the church kind of like backs out, just kind of give it off to my pride. And I've lived here all these years and I came after the deal with this day, the church and and, um. You know, allowing church to close floors and and the wheels that were made, pretty cool, I guess, because. We, I I think the people, they were very worried about the traffic. That's why we live with that game now. And they made that deal. About Sunday, and I think it was Wednesday night when they used to suffer. But then you're gonna have a meeting and you're gonna look at the records about what was discussed then. But you really have to apply it to the town, like you said, that's ruined quite a bit. You didn't have James' point when they made that deal. And just. I had dogs, cats, I had a small child that grew up here, and that street has always been kind of scared. We had a really nice, you know, it was fifteen miles an hour and, um, gosh, it was just a little accident. I was two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, Olympia High School had their homecoming. And all the traffic was diverted, uh, force. But there wasn't policemen there. They were all on main and they were flying down, flying. And my husband went out. He was doing yard work except like this, very nice. This woman gave him a finger and sped up. Okay, now a lot of people speed up when you ask them to slow down. So he called it a police officer. He was about forty minutes later, the police officer came and my husband explained the situation. And the police officer looked in the eye and said, that woman was, um, two, uh, living free, that's for free speech. She was, that was her free speech. We knew that. And that, so for me, living on that street that this complaint is about. And possibly if you do call to get back up somehow, and the police officer tells you that the person that was speeding and breaking the law was operating on free speech. That makes me even more nervous about what you do, one small community deciding the fate of a lot of us. My forest a long time and raised our families there. And we're worried about ourself. People are, this town has grown so much in the thirty four years that I've lived here. And the church has this great layout. You come in and you let your kids out. There's like this round thing, and it's staying on the full time. And it's this round thing and you go out. There's a need, go out.
There's no need.
But there is a need for us to be safeguarded by our community.
Thank you.
That's it. So, uh, I agree with everything you're saying about that. I go to that church regularly. When it's high and this actually, I will. Take this message personally to leadership there, because I am hundred percent with. I would not want it if it was, I go to that church, I would not want that at all my house. So based on that, this will not last. See, every decision I've ever faced, like, uh. Any meeting I had on, I would personally go to talk to. In in hopes that the research is, it doesn't have to be some sort of contractual, old, you know, contract, just the same, common sense, that people don't want it. It's community, it's the church, you can go out that way. There's plenty of ways here now. So I'll do my best to carry the message. Starting.
We work with staff too, because we want to make sure that we. I listened here with the negotiations to close that room. All hammered out and John probably, well, that's, I know a lot of you were, um, let's just get those details that go together. Um, I think we can make a better case.
Yeah.
That way, all all together. I know also that you have.
Well, I would say, I just, I just think that it's sometimes needs to be handled. We're hearing more factually, informally, you know, if you did that, you know, it will never more.
We've gone to the.
Yeah, I see. And it's not an unreasonable request at all. Not unreasonable at all.
We've gone to the church.
Right. They're all the same. So I can't promise anything. I would say I.
You're you're on it. You're you're in now. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll still play on Sundays now on. They don't do it. You already do.
And it's asking, I don't mean, because names are, I don't like all of them. That's a long time. It was the drums.
But I I agree with all of you. And the fact is, I would want that part of my house. Thank you, sir. Renee, say it again.
Chingalani.
Say it again, Mark.
Chingalani.
Chingalani.
Yes. Um, my father was living on Forest Street, and we still live at four twelve Forest Street. When the church, and he wasn't deep in that church, when they wanted to close the road and make the gymnasium and education building. I spoke with the senior pastor, who was the pastor at that time. He said the town was very concerned about the traffic in the neighborhood. And that, he said, I don't believe it was written contractually, but informally, we agreed, us, the church. For the town that we would keep the gate closed Sunday and Wednesday being the exception. I had this conversation with Troy Schmidt about a year and a half ago, maybe two years. I called Brad Fornelius. Brad Fornelius had no idea what's going on. And then I heard that Troy has come to Robert Smith and asked to take the gate down. And you said it's on right property. You can do whatever you'd like to do. And I went today, I called and left a message for Troy Schmidt. He did not respond. I went to the church and I spoke to the senior pastor, Jack Carter. And I said, I don't understand why Troy would have written this letter when he knew that it was an issue. He just wants the gate gone. Now, if the town was concerned then with traffic entering the neighborhood. I would think they would be interested now in keeping that. Traffic away from the neighborhood. I don't know about you, but I think we have more traffic in our neighborhood. And we have consistently gotten more traffic in our neighborhood. You fix that into the street or that in the town on Oakdale, so they can't go tracing through their neighborhood anymore. The Forest Street is now made Street West. And they come and they fly. And they're rude. So. There wasn't agreement. You weren't here. Troy Schmidt knew because I had called and I've also called Brad Fornelius. This is not very Christian of them. And when I spoke to the senior pastor today, I said Troy knew that we didn't want that gate removed and he bypasses.
Thank you very much. All right, well, you know how we all do.
So it's item. Under new business item one, this is a resolution twenty twenty four dash zero eight. The Wintermere Trail Project, Town of Wintermere Safe and Rooted School Project, case one, presenting tonight, we might.
Yes, yeah, I just grabbed my kind of start, just making sure that's some, uh, here's just a question. Hello, Michael, we're with Timmy Horn. Um, I've been involved with this project for some time now. Um, this is kind of a moment celebration for us because it's time to sign the agreements with the Florida Department of Transportation to receive funds. And that's what this action about is, uh, requested by town council for tonight. Um, it's been a long time coming. And we have, we've spent quite a bit of time, uh, we've done several field visits. We did the design wrapped up in pretty much twenty twenty two. But because some of the funds were received from the state and prior to that, these ones were received from the federal government, um, we've had to. Uh, do quite a bit of additional studies. We had to look at it, uh, uh, processes and specifications. We've made very few changes to the actual design plans after receiving that money. But we have had to go through a lot of additional steps to to satisfy, uh, the Department of Transportation that, uh, we are being good stewards of those, uh, federal and state dollars. So, um, here we are today. We are asking, um. For town council to give town manager Robert Smith, um, the authority to sign an agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. Um, I believe it's a pass. There's, uh, it's quite good reading. Um, that agreement is largely quarterly reporting. It's what the department uses for all agreements such as this. Um, we've, uh, we've also been working, I've got, I've got to say, thank you to Tanya. She's been doing a great job of coordinating with, uh, F D F T staff. Who's been assigned to these types of, uh, cost sharing tech projects in their local agency, uh, projects department and, um. We're almost ready for construction. So after this, I'll give you a little bit of 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 timeframes. Once this agreement or once, once you were authorized to sign the agreement, it'll take a little bit of time before, um, we're ready to advertise or construction. I would probably be in early, early, uh, early twenty twenty five, so a few months from now. And then you usually give a valid month for contracts to respond, a month for negotiations, things like that. Looking at starting construction at some point, probably early summer. And it's somewhere between twelve eighteen months, um, uh, to get substantial completion. And for those of you, this includes, uh, some drainage improvements that'll address some of the flooding that's been going on for for for. That gate probably maybe even longer, um, up near the existing, uh, bridge that goes up over the canal. Uh, this will provide a new pedestrian bridge. It'll remove the old pedestrian bridge. We, we spent some time with a previous version of the council. Looking at the specifics, the specifics of what the bridge would look like, what sort of thrust shape it would have, like color would be. So. Um, a lot of this is, and that is some time, um, with the tree more, making some adjustments to the path of, okay, what if we, what if we just kind of meander this way a little bit to preserve a tree? And, um, matter of fact, we, we made a couple of those changes, uh, to the roadway and drainage plans. But need to still update the land state plans to show the tree number, these trees number eighty seven, eighty eight were preserved. And then there was also changing the rotary sign, um, as well as the ground by itself. So. Lot of work, lot of time. Here we are getting ready to, uh, go approximately one point seven million dollars to the state and federal government. Um, if you have any questions, I know I have. Plans all over the place with this one, but, um. By now, I feel like we've had a bunch of discussions about this project, so. By now, I feel like we've had a bunch of discussions about this project, so, um, if there's any areas you'd like to cover further, I'm happy to do my best.
So Mike, just for clarity, we help us with, we have the resolution twenty twenty four oh eight, so this is where you understand exactly what we're doing. That approves us to move forward with the project and drop those funds down to the town, right, with federal and state funding. Um, then the next item is item two, I don't want to mix the two together, but that is the, the actualization of, of the agreement with FDOT, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, so it would give the town manager authority to sign that agreement.
So that you were, you're co-mingle, but they stand, uh.
And again, this is like, i- if you, maybe you feel like, well, gee, the town manager has authority to do such things. This is something that, uh, the Florida Department of Transportation is asking to be consistent with their procedures.
Tell us any questions for.
Um, so, based on people that use it, my daughter's at the school now, um, I had some, a couple of people that had asked us questions about the actual trail, which. I was at Old Eau, he was like five, six years ago, so very primitive project, so that's a little. Um, but one of the things people had asked me about is, um, these are their questions, but when you come off the bridge. And you're on the north side of the bridge, right now that area is very elevated, and I don't know, just because of stuff that happens under there, I seem to remember a lot of that in the past. And so people were asking that when the path comes off of there, is it going to be elevated, like a big drop off down to the. You know, the sides swales or roads or whatever on either side, and if so, that there's going to be some sort of railing to make sure that kids riding bikes and things don't go. Yeah, down that slope.
Sure, so, uh, to start with, I think that's just the old railroad, uh, alignment, and so, uh, that's, that's how high the railroad was there historically. Now you're like, it's very forested, um, there was, it was a little bit tough to get up there for some of the initial site. It's, uh, they, they fly, fly through, but, um, it's flat enough and wide enough that there will not be a, a significant drive, drop off. That would constitute a hazard, so there will still be enough space where it's relative and flat to not be, not be dangerous. And it's also going to be freeze, freeze there, um, but we, we did look at that based on a survey and, and we determined that there was no need of the fact that it's something like. And where is, because, once you get out there, it is, it is wide enough to, to have that facility without, um, a significant drop off. Um, now that eventually it does slow down, and once you get just north of where the trees end. We would have, um, the golf cart pad would, would end, just, I know I didn't mention the golf cart yet, I apologize for that. Golf carts are allowed on the, on the bridge itself. So from, um, full vein, the new, there will be a ramp specifically for golf carts. They would then be able to get to the trail and bottlers prevent golf carts from riding further north and south on the trail. Uh, but they wouldn't be allowed for that across, so this would connect your southern portion of the golf cart. Network to the north side of town, and vice versa. Um, once you get north of the wooded area, we didn't want to drop the golf carts out immediately because of that elevation difference you mentioned. And we're just going over some water and, uh, uh, also through a lot of trees. We, we decided to take it right past where the sort of wooded area ends, then the golf carts, uh, would push over to the south.
Okay, that just created another satisfaction.
Yeah, I realize that.
Okay, that's okay, no, that's great, um, okay, because one, so one of the other questions I got from people was, how wide was the bridge going to be?
Yeah.
And if, I thought the whole reason, and, and what are the transitions are, because it said ten to fourteen feet for the width. And, um, over the face, not just specifically in the bridge, but like the whole face is in ten to fourteen. So the base one, first question is, which proportions are ten feet, twelve feet, or fourteen feet? It looked like mostly ten when I was, eight, but.
That's right, that's right, so it's ten or fourteen, it's not like it varies.
Okay.
Here and there, it's ten feet pretty much everywhere except where the golf carts are allowed. And in that area, we wanted more space, wanting for them to be able to pass each other, but also just recognize that there could be multiple users at the same time. So only in the space where golf carts are allowed, which is generally over the canal, but again, it extends north to the end of that. Wooded area, um, so it's about seven. The very support team line, the rest is, and then it goes back to kind of north of the bow.
We beat this pretty hard to have the. We got convinced that the end result that we wanted was becoming two golf carts to be able to pass, so it's a safe amount of, uh, space for pedestrians and bicycles, so. There's, there, there was some thought to make it more narrow. I think because people did ones also opposing, but at the same time, really felt just important that. At that safety margin, uh, for the kids.
So my second question that has now popped in my head because of what you said was. Um, and, and part of this question is, you're part of this question is for Robert, actually. So I thought that the whole reason that the trail was going to be ten foot wide the whole way through town was for it to be an all timeable used path. Because state law says we have to have wider than eight feet in order for golf carts to be able to use it. So I'm guilty of this as well as other people I've talked to, that thought that the whole work trail was going to be able to be used for the golf cart, but it sounds like it's only the bridge.
Correct, in many of those earlier discussions, um, actually the width at ten feet is less than the standard width that, uh, the, the state and most, most municipalities like hill trails. Um, typically it's twelve feet, right, it's okay to do ten feet, but typically it's twelve feet. And, um, direction from the town at the time was concerned with speed, like cyclists to ride really, really fast. When it's actually a line, so we narrowed it down in order to make it more friendly to people who are going less than twenty miles per hour, right? We wanted it to be a lower speed facility, recognizing all of the usage of it in town. And that's why it was narrowed, instead of the standard twelve, it turned to ten feet. That for the portion where we're sharing it with golf carts, it was prudent to widen that portion out to fourteen.
Okay. Question for Robert is, we had a conversation probably, I don't know, seven months to a year ago, somewhere in that, general range. About when the work trail was clean up to the school, being able to do a step out on the east side of the elementary school's campus. So that the golf carts could continue up through there and be able to park on that side. But if we're not going to be allowed to use that area, we're not going to be able to use that stretch of work trail between. The bridge and the school, how would that, how, what were you envisioning for the summer, when we talk about it?
Well, it'd be down that no name road. Remember, you had a road parallel to the trail system besides when you get from Lake Butler Boulevard to the school. But then you can say, look up Lake Butler Boulevard with the golf cart, and then you'd have to go down that no name road.
That probably gets to the east side of the campus department in the right way that's between the wire road and like the grass area, because that's the part we talked about.
Onto school property?
Yeah, it could be the town right away property that is. On the east side of the campus, between the wire, the school building itself.
Okay.
That's the baseball field, sort of like where everyone parks for baseball.
Yeah, that's. Pretty much where you have the right away lineage or lineation markers, that's where our property pretty much ends.
Okay.
The rest is all school or manor's property.
So you were leaning on the left side of the no name street, like Butler extension, whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that, that helps me with my golf cart map stuff.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, oh, I have one other thing, so regarding the trees, why you said tree number eighty seven and eighty were actually on my list. Um, and then I know that there was some concerns brought up from, um, tree board members for a couple of things. Um, one was, you know, there was meandered in a lot of places, but there was a section that there's been concern about between Lake Butler Boulevard and Park Avenue. Two of those include those trees, but there were a couple of other ones I think that they were concerned about meandering. So are we potentially able to tweak that on the other ones, if they had other ones they were concerned on, or?
Do you have the tree numbers by any chance?
I don't, because we didn't think, we didn't see the nature of that tonight, um. But, I mean, I, I don't have the pronouns, I can look, but it was, I know the concern was only a primary on the, on the line.
So it's, it's difficult to say in definitive.
Right.
Um, as a sort of rule of thumb, like if it would affect the alignment, then I think we're probably past that point. And there would have been a reason why we have the, the alignment in one area, perhaps it has some water falling swales. Without knowing, I can't, I can't really answer exactly, if it has to do with the. Species of tree or, uh, the spacing of trees, then I say we still have, uh, speaking with Tyler earlier today. She would be willing to, to, uh, take another look at some of the landscaping components. And from FDOT's perspective, they just don't care, like the town is funding the landscaping improvement, so whatever you want to do with that is up to you. Um, when it comes to the alignment, then I think we, we need to, to stick to the, the plan we have now. Partly just do the schedule, and I'm sorry that I can't give you, uh, uh, engineering rationale for why a decision, what, what's, what's saying.
Okay, so that, but in the drawings that were presented in the agenda pack at eighty seven and eighty eight are compacted.
So there, the, the, you can, if you look at the roadway alignment, like we did, that, not roadway, I'm sorry, the trail alignment, we had it bent it around them. Um, we did not update the land state plans, so remove the X of those trees and show the, uh, root protection via the water chairs.
And was that based on the conversation with Trigler? The eight, the tree number eighty seven and eighty eight, is that why you guys standard?
It was, yeah, yeah, it was, uh, it's, uh, twenty twenty two.
October twenty seconds.
We had a study with that.
We didn't interrupt.
Modification to the alignment, as we resolved that, that.
Counting the additional questions for Robert.
Yeah, it's a couple of things we already covered, that's from six, the school, that's the first thing, that's, that's one too.
Not only six, at the time we started, uh, the town did not own all of the right of way, so we started at north.
Okay.
Which was the starting first track, yeah, so it's from there up to Park.
Okay. And I, as far as meandering, professional ZP, this is my career. More meandering the better for slowing down traffic, because we need by.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
So, yeah, that's just, this might be.
Through emails.
They, they weren't even saying when we started, I, I know.
This is the reason I, I don't think I was supposed to do this in two thousand and eleven, because our first meeting, bro.
So the more you meander, the less people get to it.
So, yeah, it's, uh, it's, uh. The process, the, the results are going to be so bad, they're really, they're going to be bad. All right, council, I'm looking for.
Problem question, we want to end it on. So four drawings that are in here, then, everything that was presented in the packet other than tree eighty seven and eighty eight that they reviewed or remain are accurate? For what was in the agenda packet?
Yes, keeping in mind that, um, the council does have some leeway to make modifications related to landscaping. If they do not affect the alignment of the trail, so.
Council, any promotion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero eight Windermere Trail Project, mayor motion to approve resolution. Motion by councilperson Deb.
Thank you.
Second, councilperson, would be your last ticket, and it was. Uh, man, any additional questions, council? Begin voting with councilperson Deans.
Aye.
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 Council, looking for a motion to approve, uh, F O agreement S T N four five one nine eight seven dash one. Five eight, zero one slash zero two, and there's four, four five one nine eight seven dash two, dash six two, dash zero two. F Y twenty five, L A P, L F A, and S R agreements. Town of Windermere Safe Route School Project, case one, Windermere Trail. So moves.
Second.
So motion approved by councilperson Deb, second by. Yes. Any additional questions, council? Deena, again, voting councilperson, sure?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Thank you for the excellent report, I appreciate it, guys, if you can answer for your questions. Yes. Hey, hey. Next up is ordinance number twenty one, sorry, twenty twenty four dash one. Um, this is our annexation, uh, items, and I have Brad present, and then we'll have a public hearing. Brad, Brad, guys, do this, this is good, so the rules deserve, I mean, those rules are a little different for, um, annexations, so. Let's see what it's, I'm gonna give you.
Thank you, Matt. I'm Brad, finished, like, I'm serving as your contract town planning this evening. So, uh, what we have before you this evening is your first public hearing. For the ordinance to consider the annexation of the Shondalak community, um, which is adjacent to the town above their operating public boulevard. Um, this is your first public hearing, um, after tonight, then this will come back to you for your second public hearing. And at that second public hearing, scheduled for December tenth, uh, that's when you then make your motion whether to approve. Or not to approve the annexation, and also to set the referendum for that annexation. So tonight, as the mayor said, what this hearing is for tonight is to take any public input you have about this annexation, and then to move it forward. Um, this is a very, I give a very brief summary, because we had talked this many, 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 many times, so I'll just give a very high level summary of this annexation. Um, so what we have done, we've gone through the process, there is a process under Florida statute for annexation. The process that we're following here in town is what's called involuntary annexation. Which means it has to go through a referendum for it to be approved. So the area that we're looking at is the Shondalak community, um, it's approximately. No, I don't know, fifty acres, but it's a little bit over a hundred acres, it's seventy six parcel. Uh, and the development itself is very similar to the town of, the lot sizes are similar, the types of houses that are there, we leave very similar. Where we have here in Windermere, I already. This annexation area is comprised of four different areas within Shondalak. We have the Shondalak subdivision, we have the Park West subdivision. And then along Lake Butler Bou, uh, Lake Butler, there's lots that are not part of either one of those flats, but they're part of Shondalak. They actually have an agreement with the HOA, so they are part of that. And then we have that one property that is between the town and Shondalak, it's not behind the caves. So those are the four areas that are covered under this annexation to firm it in. Um, as you all know, we've had several workshops with the residents of Shondalak, as well as with the rest, the town residents here and with the council. And, um, generally, we've gotten positive responses from the residents of Shondalak. I will also, just so everyone knows, this was initiated by the HOA of Shondalak, they approached the town for this annexation. That's what started this whole process. Um, the other important part of this is the process we're going through. Um, so one of the first things we had to do is we did the annexation analysis, which you all have seen previously. So we went through the analysis and looked at and showed up at all the statute for requirements for annexations, and it's adjacent to the town. It's not, it's a com, it's a compact area, um, and, and it's also developed for urban purposes. And I also want to say, urban purposes for annexation on the Florida statute is completely different. Than what Orange County talks about when they talk about their rural boundaries. This area is developed for urban purposes as defined by Florida statute, so we're fully compliant with all the prerequisites for annexation. The other part is procedural. So what we had to do with that study, we had submitted to Orange County, to the mayor of Orange County, uh, we did that in, in October. Um, and they then had an opportunity to do, provide any feedback or concerns, um, we received none. We had no objections to Orange County, uh, Ron Strick and I, we met with Darren Brooks and John Weiss, the county administrators, county administrator. Talked to them over the annexation, they had no concerns, and they're actually surprised that we annexed some property not to promote development. We annexed some property to protect development. So we're the opposite of everybody else, so they, they, they had no objections or concern with our annexation from the county's perspective. So that, that requirement has been satisfied. Um, then we were required to send out notices to all the property owners within the annexation area, we also did that in October. We sent a notice of, you know, of them, of these public hearings, and also of potential future referendum, we didn't have a date yet, so the date's not in that letter they got. Um, and we sent that out, I can see only one phone call from those letters, and it was from a new resident, had moved in recently, and I explained the annexation, she had no concerns about it. And she was going to go get registered as a Orange County voter, so she'll be voting for a referendum. Um, but I've got no other feedback from the letters that went out. And then we also, the town, we also published the required newspaper notice, um, prior to tonight's hearing. So we've done all the procedural aspects correctly with this. In terms of the impact in town with this, uh, we evaluated that, worked closely with, with Robert and, and, like, directors, and really, this is a small annexation. Like directors and really, this is a small annexation. Um it's only total, I think, right now, there's fifty one houses there, I think it's built out of fifty six. It's build out people one hundred and twenty, one hundred and fifty, something like that. It's not a big annexation, doesn't have a big impact on our services. In terms of what we do at the town, um the police department has confirmed they could easily serve that area better than the county can. And with all other services we have, we can serve it. Um it would also for the town generate some additional revenues for the town and add more taxes, it's about three hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. Based on last year's values, when we did the study. Um and then for a property owner within Chondalak, you have this property, it'll be different for everybody. Um the change for them is they came in on the property taxes they would pay and assessments they would pay. When they would come into the town, they would pay on average about one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars in additional taxes and assessments. Where that difference comes in is they will actually pay less in added more taxes. But you'll be paying more in assessments when they would come into the town. But again, as we met with the residents of Chondalak, that value that they get. Are exceeds that additional cost that they will have. Um so that's the overview of the annexation and I will just say, so you have, again, you need all the criteria for annexation. Um we don't see any, foresee any objections moving this forward from the county or any other governmental agency. As we move forward with that. So are you happy to try to answer your questions, Brad?
Council, any questions for Brad before we open up the public hearing?
Brad, sorry, you said the Senator Tampa would do the second public hearing. And then she says something about a referendum for annexation of the referendum, just. The residents of Chondalak referendum for town. Thank you, Sam, I need to talk about. So any ordinance that you have before you this evening. Um first, it's set up the way it's set up right now, it's only a referendum for the voters of Chondalak. Does not include the vote here of town voters, it's only for Chondalak. It's written that way, exactly the direction we had the town council putting that together. Um also, I I need to talk about the referendum, any ordinance you had before you this evening, we'll put this together. We didn't have a confirmation from the supervisor of elections yet on the actual date. So in your ordinance that you have before you tonight, it says the uh referendum date of um January ninth. But the actual date, we got confirmation of that today, will be January twenty ninth, so when this comes back to. Twenty first, twenty first, twenty first, thank you, twenty first. When this comes back to you on the tenth, that will change with the ordinance, we can continue on because it doesn't affect the title of the ordinance in any way. Um we'll just correct him the actual date.
So you're talking about the referendum for the residents of Chondalak.
Correct.
Not residents of Winnebago.
The way the ordinance is right now, the ordinance would have to be changed if that's what the council would want to do. Um you would have to change the ordinance to say both Chondalak and voters within the town of Winnebago.
Yeah, as a personal note, for me, seems a little one sided for the residents of Chondalak. Get an opportunity to vote, opportunity to acquire, I can assume. Other required vote or kind of required.
Yeah, under Florida statute, the requirement is. The folks that are being annexed, they have to be, have the ability to vote under a referendum, it's required. Because we're doing what's called a revolting. The statute then says, is that a local option? Whether or not the residents of the town, voters of the actual town vote as well, it's not a requirement. It's an option, but it's not required.
I think Tom, you were asking, are the people who live in Chondalak all required to come out and vote for it?
Yes, oh, no, it's a simple majority, it's uh on on the referendum. And it's the same whether it's Chondalak voters or town voters. It's fifty percent plus one.
Yeah. Uh so I think what I'm trying to guess, principally speaking, it seems a little one sided as the residents, and I'm supporting. Uh it just seems a little one sided, residents of Chondalak. Of voting on whether they want to become residents, Winnebago, Winnebago residents. One of the states, so whether or not they want to annex it. I think it should be both people. Town residents and Chondalak residents who want to be in Winnebago. And once again, I support the annexation for a lot of all the right reasons. I think that, in my opinion, it's always been my opinion that all annexations should be a referendum. On both sides. For the same reason that Chondalak is a referendum, it's just important the residents live here as it is the people who live in Chondalak. That's that's my opinion.
No, I'll say it's not a technical decision, it's basically a decision of the.
So it's clearly at the council, right, so you know, I think what I would say to that is you have an annexation that is. Of relatively small size, minimal impact, the character matches, character now. Um the difference uh between having a referendum for those who live in Chondalak and don't have a say. Your constituents from town, uh that's our job to represent them. And to vote according to how we feel that the town. Is it, is it an option to have a full referendum? Yes, they're very rarely successful. So you're pretty much in your real success, which you want to do. So they're not, uh they're, when you get into a referendum of the en- of of the entire body, it's like. It's like housing for, it's like low income housing. People love it, everybody says we ought to have it, so there are people that will. So it's just one of those nice things, so you do that, they're very, very least.
So, in my opinion, if the residents of Winnebago. Voted not to have Chondalak in its skin. That would be a valid reason to have a referendum. Because not having a referendum is feared that residents might not support it. Does not like the reason not have a referendum, that's my opinion.
That's good, so remember, but all I'm saying is that this body represents, representing the entire town and community. And I've talked to a lot of people, most who are supportive because they feel that this. The word I get the most from this one is like, this is the no brainer, what they worry about are, are. You know, those are, those can be character changing, those can be completely changing, those can change the way you need to say your charter, the way you need to vote. The way you need to set up your, your uh elected representation. Yeah. Um this particular annexation is much smaller than that, it doesn't reach that level of impact. We're totally.
I agree with everything you're saying, I understand the respectability and we need the representation of five town council people that are up here. I think certain things should be a referendum. And I think we should not have a referendum because we're afraid of the result.
I don't think we're afraid, I think we're elected to make good decisions. And this is part of the job. Um I think trying to throw everything off the referendum on that council.
I don't, I don't recommend throwing everything off the referendum, I do. One of the things I've not drawn my mind myself, in my opinion, is that annexation is a referendum.
Okay.
And I would say, I agree for everything that you said now. I have had a couple of people come to me and say that they think it's a good idea to annex and Chondalak, and I have friends of Chondalak that I know want to be annexed. That being said, the majority of people that I spoke with said the exact opposite. They, some of them said that even if they want Chondalak annexed, they want the right to have a vote on it. So let me ask this, Brad, uh because I know this is the first reading and we have another reading at the um December tenth. So at some point, if we were to have a lot of residents that express their concerns, because unfortunately, the ones that have expressed concerns, we have. I told the police, you know, the other council members, so that they're aware that this is how people are feeling. Some of them are new residents, some of them are really old, long term residents. Um but I don't think that they govern it. So if there were to be, you know, an onslaught of people coming out and, you know, expressing their opinions on this between now and the December tenth one. Is there still an option for us as a house to change our decision on whether we extend the referendum to us?
You you can make the change all the way up to your motion on December tenth. Yes.
Just a question. The difference in cost for a referendum for the entire town versus the cost for just the Chondalak residents? What's your estimate of the difference?
How much? Four thousand dollars?
Four thousand dollars additional to do a complete referendum for the entire town versus uh. Well, what would it just Chondalak?
It's thirty thousand according to our question, right? That we asked earlier.
No, that's for all election. Comes up in March, but um for Chondalak by itself, I'm looking on a quote from the election office to be exact. But I wouldn't, but I wouldn't say that it's going to be like maybe two.
Two thousand?
But maybe, maybe. Between advertising and all that we have done with this.
Ten percent or less than what we have lot wise now, so if you're talking about.
Outcome is that super majority vote, so when you've encompassed the whole town, then I'd go like that. That number.
That's right. It's just the sheer cost of any more. To the part, I mean, if you, the council is here, people vote for the, for the town of Winnebago. The referendum, by sending that to the Chondalak residents, that has the town of Winnebago represented by the town council. Plus Chondalak residents.
This went to annexation before then in the past, correct?
No.
Four corners and that one, so they never made that up. And we, we, we talked about support and all the other annexed and we did not to.
And they were much larger than this.
Yeah.
This, this is a very, you know, this is filling in the cracks, like if a better term, you might control. The, the more you control, the worse of your community, the more you control the quality of life. That's what we started to do here, this is about getting big. This is, this is just about maintaining and increasing a little bit of tax base so we're able to. Buy additional services, additional opportunities. These folks are going to think they're in town anyways. And they're going to add, they're going to add to our. Very low, low risk, also, council made the strategic determination of. Many years ago, discussing annexations in depth, that any time that we have the ability to annex waterfront area. This is current, but but all of that.
Uh somebody had told me that once upon a time, if you're saying that we never had to. We never went to, you know, full referendum or whatever, these past ones. So I had a, a resident, and I honestly don't remember exactly which one it was, but they, I believe they were former council members at the time. Willows was annexed in and they were told that it was no negatives to the Willow's being annexed in. So then after the Willow's had annexed in, uh Orange County School District came along and said, now your population has increased over a certain point. And now you have to hire your own school resource officer, whereas we didn't need that before.
We didn't just have resource officers back, then I don't think. Yeah. Was it councilperson? Okay, I did some. Time ago, I'm like, I don't think we even had resource officers back then.
Something to do with the school district, I believe that's the basic option. Oh, there you go, there's your passcode number.
The, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act is what um required. Orange County Public Schools to put SROs at the schools. And Orange County, that's why they go ahead and enter into agreements with local municipalities to provide that SRO, has nothing to do with population. They, they entered into speaking with us because the school's located in our municipal boundaries. Yeah, and they, to this very day, they pay us to do that, it's not quite as much as we would like to get, you know, we. We do differ with them and what we feel it costs to have that officer, but at the end of the day.
And what's important, annexation does not change school assignments, has no effect on that at all, there's no change in.
Well, sorry, one more question. I'm sorry, I haven't really got your answer on, how much does it cost for us to have?
For the entire town?
Well, whatever we take for a.
If you do the entire town, that would be like forty five hundred hours, five thousand dollars, if you do just. Chondalak area, fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand.
So four thousand dollars.
First round, wait, that's a lot of money, like, you're going to see a whole day, so I just forgot my.
I'm waiting on from them now, they're. Oh, absolutely, as soon as I get it, I can pass it along to everyone.
And once again, just to clarify, I am not opposed, so obviously, again, we're voting for it. It's just a principle thing for me. Um it's a principle thing for me.
All right, any additional questions at this time, council? All right, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to close the. Council meeting, we'll get up here, I'm gonna read the entire, or read the heading of the ordinance. Um then any uh wishes to speak on this item in the public, may feel free to do so, do not have to have them signed up prior to the meeting or anything else. Any people, we all are. Well, this is our Winnebago Town Council meeting at seven oh five P M. We opened a public hearing uh at seven oh five P M, and this is the hearing on. The whole thing right here, the numbers right, ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one, annexation. An ordinance of the town of Winnebago, Florida pertaining to town bound boundaries, expanding the town boundaries by annexing into the town's corporate limits. Certain lands known as the Chondalak community, which is comprised of a platted subdivision of Chondalak. Park Avenue West and unplatted lots along Lake Butler, consisting of approximately one hundred and two acres. Redefining the boundary lines of town, calling a special election for the purpose of holding a referendum by mail ballot. Registered voters in the area to be annexed, whether the annexation should be approved, providing for separability. And providing for effective dates, at this time, anyone who wishes to speak on this item, they come and join us. See none? We'll close our public hearing at seven oh six P M and reopen our Winnebago Town Council meeting at seven oh seven. Brad, are we good? Do we need to vote at this juncture? Thank you, council, very good discussion. Next up is item B, this is the ways committee appointments, there are seven appointments. Um first one is for Anna Andor, Clara O'Malley, Emerson Elliott, Emily Shore, Lauren Lance. Ajah Andor, did I say that?
Maya.
Maya, trying to make it harder than it is. Um and Sophia, uh Sophia Hart. Um council, you can approve all of these appointments as one motion or separately?
Make a motion to appoint, to um approve all.
Motion approved by councilperson David. Second, councilperson David. Any questions, comments, or concerns, council?
Just really proud of them because they uh had our meeting.
Again, voting, councilperson sure?
Aye.
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 Thank you, council. Next up is Long Range Planning Committee, um and this is the appointment of Paul Pantosi the second. Looking for a motion to approve, council. Motion approved, motion approved, councilperson, that's second, Williams. Begin voting with councilperson Pains.
Aye.
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 Motion carries yes. Next up, contracted agreements, this is approval of the third avenue Magnolia Street, besting drainage phase two subrecipient agreement. Four three three seven dash four four three dash K with uh the Florida Division of Emergency Management. Stat recommends approval, this is table from our October twenty six twenty twenty four town council meeting. And we have Kimberly Horn present, right? How, how are you?
I'm, I'm doing great, thank you.
Good to have you.
So how's town with Kimberly Horn? So here, talking about the third Magnolia, uh you know, and that's the besty projects. Uh so this has been several years in the making as well, uh similar to Ward Trail, we uh had to go through a process to get. F D M approval for the grant. Um for the phase two grant, I'll go into a little more on the details of that in a bit. Uh just a general overview of the project that you see on your screen, I'm going to talk about the project in its entirety. And then I'll talk about the different phases and the process time which you got to this point with F D M. So the purpose of this project is to approve the drainage both from the conveyance. Erosion control and sediment control to improve the waterfall and lakes. Uh the project, I'm going to start from west to east and kind of from south to north. So we're making drainage and regrading improvements from uh Main Street, so on Knight Av- Knight Avenue. Uh Oakdale up to East Eight and then around over to Bessie. Uh, Oakdale up to East Eight, and then around over to Bestie up to uh Six. So that is the scope of the project. And throughout this project, we work with the town, um, the, the residents, as well as the tree board. To uh provide uh drainage improvements and regrading along the corridor. And um in February of twenty twenty two, we submitted final plans over to F D M as part of the H M G B grant. So the uh H M G B grant starts with two phases. So phase one is uh basically approval of the design, so allowing to move to phase two, which is the construction funding. So uh during phase one, we had to go back and forth with F D M quite a bit uh based upon a benefit cost analysis, uh which is also known as a V C A. So we wanted to submit the entire project, which we did to F D M and did approval, but we just could not meet the benefit cost analysis requirements of F D M. So in early two twenty twenty three in February, um, we discussed it with, with Tanya and with Robert and others in the town. And in order to meet the V C A, we split the project up. So the way that you see it right now, phase one in kind of that green color is the downstream basin. So that's where you kind of get the most bang for your buck with the drainage improvements. So separating that out into two phases with uh phase one being in green, we were able to make that V C A work. And what that means is that the D M would provide seventy five percent of the construction funding for that portion, and the town would do a twenty five percent uh partial match. So where we are now is that D M, after working with them for about two years, we started in February twenty twenty two, we're in the end of twenty twenty four right now. Has approved um phase one of the project to go to phase two, which is construction. So the green area to go to construction. So what's what we're asking council tonight is to um approve the signature of that phase two contact. To take phase one to construction with a D M funding. So now we'll move to phase one, which is the area in blue. So for phase one, that portion unfortunately did not meet the V C A that was required. So that portion would be town funded, but the intent is to advertise the entire project, phase two and phase one at the same time. And we talked to um F D M about it, and they were fine with advertising it as one bid, so that the town gets the economy of scale. Uh, more bidders and hopefully better bid prices. Um, but what we would do is we would just separate out the invoicing and the quantity to the two projects. So that the phase um, that the phase one could be invoiced F D M reimbursement, and phase two would be entirely the town. Um, so that's covered, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Sure, so for benefit cost analysis, so the difficulty with the benefit cost analysis, the way D M um. Handles it is really, the benefit is to mitigate the cost associated with flood damage. So for these roads, even, you know, we all know that they wash out, they erode, uh they cause a lot of maintenance, a lot of interruption, a, a lot of, a lot of. Hardship within the right of way, and there's a cost associated with that, there was not a lot of flooding associated with finishable elevation. So basically, you have a component that's kind of maintenance and damages within the right of way. And you have a bigger component, which is damages due to flood, approachment within the actual finishable elevations of the structures. So we went through and we had to run numerous story events and provide information on the benefit in dollars. And the D M has a tool where they compare that to the cost of the project, and that's how they come up with their benefit cost analysis. And the goal is to try to get that greater than one, where the benefit exceeds the cost forever.
So essentially, it's an R O I on the mitigation investment by the state and the federal government. Um, so that, that is the tool that they use to kind of say, this is a solid project versus maybe one that's not as valuable.
Correct.
And what are some of the things that have impacted R O Is over the last, so you know, this is a four three three seven project started in two thousand eighteen. So the cost estimations impact the R O Is, that's why it's so big.
For sure, so, you know, we submit in February of twenty twenty two uh based upon the construction cost. We did an update in twenty three, when we did what we'll call the plan split, because after we got the V C A to work and we were able to get that um. Um, concurred with, with F D M, we actually split the pack up in February twenty twenty three. And so we did a new construction cost estimate, and you know, the price went up, and now when we go to bid, you know, we'll have to see what the bid prices are, but the construction prices would still lift every year.
What are some of the advantages of combining the two together and advertising as one, what does that allow us to save? You know, globalization?
Right, it allows you to save on, save on globalization, it allows you to save on any type of maintenance or traffic. It also allows you to get one contractor on board, so you get economies of scale when it comes to material procurement. It al- also helps you from a schedule perspective, because one contractor will work the entire project, instead of trying to have two contractors there at the same time. When you have two contractors working in one area, there's often um. The uh likelihood of clients and things like that, just because you don't know who did what to which part of the project. So he did this kind of deal, and really, it's, you know, with the competitive environment that we have now for contractors, they're not really bidding on small jobs. So the bigger jobs also allows you to perhaps get more contractor bids, which hopefully will help you get bigger, uh better bids.
Thank you, that's very important.
And that was a reminder, it's also being bid with Butler as well, we're, we're bidding it with Butler as well.
Excellent, so we're going to, we're going to maximize the confidence of scale here wherever we tend.
Yes.
Chase this better contractor, chase this better time performance, so pointing fingers back and forth, and hopefully um allows us to uh have more competitive bids.
Yes, sir.
Council, any additional?
Just to confirm, Marcus, the budget numbers you have in the town budget includes our cost match, the F D M phase this project as well as our planning.
Yes, sir.
And with, and that includes the current parking estimate, the assessment.
Yes, sir.
And, and what is that number, what's, what would that be in this property? The match is about, what, one hundred ninety three thousand?
Yeah, so I have that number in front of me, so for phase one, the match is roughly two hundred five thousand. And then for phase two, which is entirely funded by the town, that is estimated at five hundred eighty seven thousand. So roughly two oh five and five eighty seven.
I think this funds come from our stormwater assessment, right?
It'll come from stormwater and also due to the longevity of the project, it'll probably run into two fiscal years.
Tom, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I do.
Councilperson Haines.
There has been so much confusion on this project, um, so. With, with the cost, because I mean, in, in the agenda packet, it says we're proving phase two. Then the entire thing is presented, I feel like there's a lot more clear explanation with what you said tonight. Um, but, you know, like, I'm not even sure those numbers all match up, because I'm seeing a total cost of nine hundred and two thousand. Or the part that's being funded with Venus, so is that the total cost of phase two? Or phase one, and what portion of that is in town, because I, what was in the agenda packet? Is six hundred and forty one thousand total cost for the part that is stamped to be funded by the town. And then there's a to be funded with Venus, and it says nine hundred and two thousand, so.
Sure, so I can explain that. So uh what's in the package includes the engineering cost, which is part of phase, and we probably should have called it segment one and segment two. But this is phase one and phase two of the design and construction. So the total cost of roughly nine hundred and two thousand, I think you mentioned, for um for phase one. Um, is for the, includes the design, and so that, that portion has already been completed as part of the phase one agreement. So those, this phase two agreement only addresses the construction cost, which is the, the eight nineteen.
The eight nineteen. Is phase one according to what you had highlighted in blue and whatever other color, I want to be clear on that, because yes, you definitely should have called something under the segments, because this is related to mass confusion, all of the neighbors and environment.
Right, so. Right, so I just a, a little bit of clarity, and then I'll, I'll answer the question, is that. D M calls the design phase, phase one, and the construction phase, phase two. And then we, and then, so when we split the plans, we probably shouldn't have called it A and B or something, um. But phase one of the plans is the area that was in green, which is the area that's east of Oakdale. And then the phase two.
I go to all like Bestie's park?
The, the Bestie's park.
Because you're on phase one.
Phase one. For the, for the construction.
Okay.
And then phase two, for the purposes of construction, is Oakdale, it was west of Oakdale, and then the portion of eight, uh, west of east.
Okay. Alright, so give me those numbers one more time.
Sure, so, so this, and I'm going to use like some destruction to, to make it not confusing.
Yes.
But for, for phase one that was in green. The construction based upon our engineer's estimate as of October twenty twenty three is eight hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty four dollars for construction.
And that is to be funded as a cost.
Correct.
So our share. Twenty N please.
The twenty five percent of the eight nineteen four twenty four is two hundred and four thousand eight hundred basis.
The other portion is?
Sure, the other portion, which is phase two, which was in uh purple, blue up there, is uh totally town funded. And based upon our October twenty twenty three construction cost estimate is five hundred eighty six thousand three hundred eighty five.
So combined, we're talking about six hundred ninety thousand.
For the tap?
Yes.
Uh, roughly seven ninety.
Sorry, I'm going to bet on that.
No problem.
Okay, so now that we have the cost clarified, um, now I have some other questions. Um, so I went back and I reviewed the forty five percent uh public workshop that we had, and the ninety percent public workshop that we had. And um, I believe it was the forty five percent workshop Victor from your team. Had basically explained that. How we call bringing the roads back to the historic elevations, that they were, as we were, were in a very specific way. So then we're not, I think it was something to do with the O T. Um. So there's lots of confusion for the neighbors, especially uh on parts of um. Eighth, where it goes from Magnolia down to the lake. And also on the portion of ninth, to the east of my property, where it goes down between the Bardos and the Debbie Strawkins, so where the, the slope is very, very steep.
Yeah.
So according to the scope of work that was presented in October twenty second council meeting, it said that you guys are going to be removing seven inches of the soil from the road, putting seven inches back. So we had questions, were we raising the roads up to where they used to be, because if not, that means that the existing swells that are tying in on either side of the road. Would have to be dug down lower than where they are already standing. And we did not get an answer on that last month. Um, and we asked for those answers, unfortunately, we did not get. I don't think we ever got those answers, other than me going back and dating um on the videos, but. When I looked at, back then, you had a legitimate line that represented the historic versus the existing. It did look like it was moving up three feet in some locations and two feet in other locations, in order to bring it back to the historic heights. So is that, or is that not happening on those steep slope parts on those ninth and eighth street?
So it is happening. So if you look at our plans, you'll see a solid line, which is the proposed profile, which is also defined as the top of finished grade of your dirt road. And if you see the dash line, that's the existing road, which has been washed out over the years. So you'll see that throughout the lower areas, as you go down to uh the lake, um, and over to east, that we are providing, um. We are raising the road up in those areas uh based upon our proposed profile. Now, let me talk a little about the six and seven inch cut. So, you know, we've been working with uh with a vendor for that face shell based paper material that's been used around the town, and it's been working really well. And Tanya and I have been working with this vendor. So the spec is that we're going to remove the six inches of existing. And then we're going to put back this, a minimum of six inches of the shell rock paper base, but then we're going to be adding a foot or two foot, depending on the profile of the road. So that you'll have more than six inches, but the minimum that we're asking the contractor to remove and replace is six. But then he still has to fill in compacting list up to the finished grade shown in our profile.
How will that tie into the existing driveways and um redways?
So with that, we do have details for the driveway, so they, they will tie into the driveway. So we do detail on the plans.
So let me ask this, because on the drawings, and I'm looking at um, at the note that she's number technically on here, but it is the portion of the road that is. From the. West side of my property, or east side of my property, going down to the. Uh, fire retention area that's on the Bestie Park and stuff. So between the Bardos and Strawkins. So I noticed that it is, they've already got a huge issue. A very recent, uh, more recent somewhat issue, I would say, of water coming down in sheet flow. Massive amounts of C F, C F S, um, in terms of cubic feet per second of water coming both onto Bardos property and onto the Strawkins property. It comes down their driveways. Um, at the Bardos property, when it goes down their driveway, then it also stays around, follows their neighbors, and it's going right next to the foundation of their homes. On Strawkins property, it is crossing her driveway in about a forty foot swath. And then it's going next to her porch, her garage, then it travels around the back, it goes up next to the back of her foundation. So what I'm looking at these drawings and what we're seeing here is that the road is now going to be higher. Then the side swells are on the other side of it, I also noticed that on them driveways, I am seeing that the flow of water is showing the water going up. Our driveways. It's going up, uh, they have two driveways on this uh plan, their main one that goes to the neighbors, the carport, the Bardos. And the secondary driveway, the gravel, and both of those show water going up those. So you feel like that that may exacerbate your problem on the water coming off the road. Even if the water adjacent by the side of the driveway is flowing into its ground. So why do those arrows in the black?
So your concern is water from the road flowing down into the driveway into the property?
Correct, because right now it's already a problem, and this looks like it's going to continue, okay.
So if you notice that on either side of the driveways, we typically have a D B I, which is a ditch bottom inlet, a pipe system as well. So, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to maximize the improvements within the right of way. While reducing impacts to trees, land save, and, and everything else in the area. So at every driveway, we are trying to catch as much water from the road as we can, and that's why next to each driveway, you see the ditch bottom inlet. So that will, that will, the, the swells will catch the water, and the D B Is will catch the water, and then we're also doing a pipe system as well. So a combination of all those things will catch a majority of the water that would have gone even more so into the driveway. Some water will go in the driveway just because of the elevations are out there, but we're trying to catch the water right before their driveway and right after their driveway in every single case.
From what's coming out of the river.
What's going out the river, on your end, from, on time property. And so, yes, we are, we are catching as much of the runoff within the driveway as possible with our swells and our ditches, and, I'm sorry, with our swells and our ditch bottom.
So what's, I mean, what's to prevent? I mean, if the project works as function. What portion of the water that's currently coming off of upstream basin areas from the intersection of Oakdale and Ninth, Northford, what percentage of that water is still going to be coming around down the road as a mainstream? Is all of it going to be collected, so that the only rainfall that we're going to see on the adjacent properties is the rainfall that is literally landing on the road and driveways. Basin to our properties?
That is.
Or is it still going to have some from upstream?
The, the intent is for us to catch a majority of the upstream runoff, and, and that was the reason for the project, and that. So we graded swells throughout the project, and because we couldn't get the swells to be big enough because of impacts, we also added. And because we couldn't get the swells to be big enough because of impacts, we also added disentire pipes. So they work together to capture as much water drainage as possible. So you know, a majority of the water coming from the upstream basin at Oakdale eight, as it goes down to east, will be caught in those swales and those stormwater systems. The portion that would flow down the driveway should be just the immediate portion right where the driveway is.
So like, for example, the road is tend to be wide. Their driveway apron is twenty feet, you're saying it should be the rainfall that falls in that to understand me?
Correct. But I'll say that area is fine with our house or in front of the driveway.
Okay.
What does the design store with that?
Uh, I'd have to check. I wanna say the soils are probably a ten year, ten year time as well.
It, I do recall on the ninety percent um meeting with that uh class, yeah, it was at the end of the ninety percent meeting, um Mark Collins asked that question. And um Victor said that you guys have different criteria to meet for different things like saltwater and the district versus whatever. And that in general, he said that it was designed to a one hundred year to accommodate all the requirements. That's what Mark Collins said. I don't know if that's.
Um, so for the hundred year, I, I think that's, I think that's part of the modeling that's done for DM. We modeled different stormy events for DM. Uh, it's, it's difficult to contain the hundred year within the roadway and that's part of the VCA. Um, so at the hundred year, we do model that and that's considering how much it approaches if they outside the roadway.
Um, so I have a couple of other questions specific to the retention ponds, um or not retention pond, our bio swells, rain gardens.
Rain gardens.
Yes, so we got two of those um in Lake Bessie Park. Uh, the one at the northern end and these are the plans that were approved and science field that delivered um to me. Uh, there are discrepancies in it in one place. Uh, we say that at the north end of Bessie Park by the triangle or shape, well, I'll just call it the triangle, the oval ones, the triangles ones to the north. The oval's north to the south. In the triangle uh retention area, there is a tree there that says eighteen inch unknown tree to be removed, town's replan at a different location. However, on another page in the drawing, that tree is left there and not removed. Uh, in the ninety percent discussions we had on the public info workshop, there are two oaks there. And the rule was to avoid those. I know that the uh, that's not like triangle was wanting to continue the email I was looking at, but the old one was triangle anyways. But that area has shifted um from what was originally proposed in the forty-five percent drawing, but there's nothing on here saying whether or not those trees are remaining or those trees are being removed. Um, and also based on the, I'm assuming for the, the contour line surface, it's a somewhat terrace slope down into bottom of the retention area, is that correct?
It's a, it's a gradual slope from the roadside down to um the swell area, so it's slowly down.
Okay, but within this, within the um retention area itself. So the side walls that come down, are they just straight and great? Does it look like by the plants that are like bogs?
Um, I believe they're straight. I can double check. So the bogs or the jogs, the like, the bogs are the jogs for the um, the, the pond itself, but it is a straight slope going out. So it's not like it goes down steps and it goes down just straight down this constant slope.
Okay, so what is the intent and the plan for those oak trees? Because I know they were discussed at the ninety percent workshop, but they're not accounted for here. And that's.
I, I believe we were able to avoid those trees, but I can definitely, definitely double check on that.
Uh, well, so in regards to both these swell, or sorry, rain gardens in, in regards to the rain gardens. Um, I had a meeting today uh with somebody from the tree board who asked if it is possible, because we went out there and we looked and you know, this hasn't been staked out down there around this. I know that Susan Parter, when she was on tree board a few years ago, they go out and walk these project sites. Um, and they're fully understanding of the pine trees and all of them, we need to find that. But for this location and the other location, they were hoping that maybe I know the size cannot be made smaller, but that it could be squished a little bit, to be just a little bit more away from the base of those trees because the the toe shape of these, where they're planning to put it is with, on the one to the south is within ten foot of the trunk of one of our heritage oaks. And on this one up here is pretty close to one. So are we able to change order after this is approved or at that, whatever point in the process to push that and move it just, you know, maybe five or so feet away from them?
I think that there is an ability to do that as long as we make up for that volume somewhere else.
I, well, they don't wanna change the size. I mean, we understand that the size um based on what was discussed at the ninety percent was this is pretty much as small as we can go on all of the things. It's really just a matter of, you know, maybe squishing the shape a little bit fatter here or narrower there so that it moves a little further.
Yes.
Not changing the volume.
I think, I think that could be done if you, if you squeeze one side, then you're gonna expand another side.
Right.
But I thought the same amount. So yes, that could be done with either a plan revision where we can reto, recontour, re rain garden slightly on one side to run more separation retreat and expand it on another. Or it can be done as a fill change if it's minor enough.
Okay. So um.
Can I help you out on that a little bit? If you're just, we spent a lot of time with this with Perico area and our arborist. The whole intent when, when we did the design, the shape of the pond really remains almost unchanged in what's currently in these plans. And those will be field conditions that we will work through to ensure that those two line loads within that basin are not affected. If we're not gonna get into the side slopes, I mean, we'll work with how, we'll work with them during the timeframe to ensure that we have the same and proper volumes that we need to have to ensure that those two trees are not affected. I think in what I'm working on with them is there is a Magnolia that they possibly go um because it's dead and everything else and we're creating all the pine trees. Do you have an arborist report?
Cause we, we weren't discussing about it.
That's all been part, in part of what we've already pre-planned and the shaping of the pond will be done organic in the field.
And there's, I mean, there's also one live oak tree that's down at the southern end across from Debbie Strawkins home. That's by the end of the rain garden as well. So we had three that we were discussing.
Yeah, so when we were meeting with Victor, in the time that we were shaping the ponds and playing them out, those will all be massage to allow us to make sure that we ensure that and therefore it'll be walking along the way with us to make sure that if we shape ponds, everything will be good.
Um, I did have another question. It says there was a maple tree that we were shooting across from the corner of Chover Tendler's house. Did that tree come down?
Yes, it's already been built.
Okay, that's great. Um, and then the one other thing is uh for the landscape plan, are we, are we able to tweak that as well?
Uh, so I, I wanna go back to the, the tree, uh the oak tree, um ready? So I'm a councilman, so I was looking through the um, the plans and the, the way that we set the plans is if the tree is to remain, we don't do a call out. And we only call the trees if we remove, because if we call out every single tree to remain, we might forget one. And so the protocol is for the, the intent in which we'll convey to the contractor is everything is to remain unless we tell you to remove it, which is the more conservative approach.
Okay.
Um, as far as the, the, the rating garden, I'm not a landscape architect specialist. But you know, there are certain plants that are suitable for removing those nutrients and things like that that we want to accomplish. So I would say that if there are plant species that the council uh would prefer or if the residents would prefer, there's an opportunity as long as they match the same functionality.
Okay, um, the, the other portion, so there's three things. One, um, that, you know, based on conversations with residents and tree board was, you know, for native species, we have a couple in there that are, so something that could function the same way. Uh, one of the other concerns was that it's using um brown beauty mulch was named. One place it said one kind of mulch, cypress, another place it said a different kind of mulch. Um, and there was a concern of using something that's more of a renewable resource such as pine needles. Um, I don't think we wanna be using die mulch anywhere near our lakes, which we can have the lakes salt maybe timing on this one, um, because we need that one out, but die mulch is banned in Europe and other countries and uh I just have information out on it as well. So we'd rather see something like a pine mulch. The third concern was not actually the plantings, but rather the rock at the bottom. And I had conversations with John, you know, recently, and I'm fully aware that the goal is that no sedimentation is going to be happening. We're taking care of that elsewhere. And then it's water that's coming in there, but we do still have two giant oaks at the one base uh rain garden. We have another oak at the other one. So we are still gonna have leakers. We're still gonna have things that get in there. And the rocks at the bottom are just gonna get filled in. So one of the ponds that was brought up to be saved was, well, it would be better if it was just solidly gone so that you maintain easier from our maintenance crew if they need to go out and do something. And to not have dirt bits that fill into the river rock in the bottom that's ultimately just gonna end up growing weeds because stuff's gonna fall there.
So for, you know, when you use something like the rocks, you do get some exfiltration, you know, properties which helps the um rain garden. Uh, substituting it with sod would be a change that would have to run by our landscape architects and our drainage folks. With that being said, you know, everything that you mentioned, we can definitely consider and discuss and we can issue a plan revision um uh before it goes to bed to show those preferred materials as long as they function the same way for uh water quantity and water quality.
I think that's one of my questions, other than I like to be a present. Now some of the other things that I can say.
Mayor, one thing too, I, I know this is gonna come up, is the fact that the total water system out there as well. The, the intent always was to try to put total water, water out there at the same exact time these projects were gonna be put in. Again, we were looking at this since twenty eighteen, prices have escalated as you can see and a lot of these costs that were proving tonight and have subsequently uh through like West Second Avenue. And also for the central base for uh the total water system, where we anticipated that to be three point zero eight one million. And that's only gonna get us twenty-five percent of what we anticipated to do in the central base. Um, so again, the intent was always there to put that in at the same time. Fortunately, the town doesn't have the funds uh to do this right now. But the intent is always to try to work with, you know, the lobbyist fund that we're gonna be hiring hopefully in the next two months. Try to get us that total water system and the money for that total water system uh which we originally intended for putting there. Not adding the total water at this point, it's not, it shouldn't affect this, the design criteria for this particular project. That was just something we had hoped to combine while we had the earth booked and do what we wanted to do. But, but you know, we don't have the finances for that, the structure, that funding's not available. Can't continue to delay this project because we uh in jeopardy of losing our F M money.
Yeah.
That money can just go somewhere else, somebody can submit a project.
Uh, I know that we had several residents defer who wish to speak on this project. It's uh Nancy Bordeaux, Bill Lardo and Jane Lance, who's coming to the podium, for your address, ask us any questions or share your concerns. Try to address this as well as.
Bill Boggs, two twenty-five, you said? You signed up? Uh. I sat up there for ten years. Nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-two. And this reminds me of nineteen eighty and the town hired consultants to do a drainage project that we need doing. The whole town is gonna be four hundred thousand dollars, what does that translate today? Probably four million. But it included all bases, included first and fourth and, well, we always have problems, like downs, like Bessie. And we had a uh, we, we had Charlie True, who's an engineer living in town, that's probably thirty, forty years experience since he here. He drew up engineering plans to fix the problem. We put it in and it worked. It didn't work so well down first and fourth, didn't work so well down lake day, down facing. But it worked really well in the lake festival. So we only had a tractor. Elmer and Richard Clapper, two, a two man public work department. So they weren't maintaining very well over the year. And, and they went in to disrepair and they're pretty much dysfunctional now. But for twenty years, I've been begging, just go out there and fix them. Just go out there and clean them out. My road never washed out when those things got put in, when those swales got put in up there, never. And we had to go through Scott Brown, who all he wanted to do was pave the roads and it was like he punished us. Running water down our, we running water down our roads until we pull, oh uncle, okay, bridges to pave roads, I don't fix everything. Well, how did that work out? It must've, he probably had the biggest meeting he ever had of angry citizens about paving roads in this town. So I thought it was all over after that. I thought, oh, Tony is coming in now, oh, we're gonna take a different approach, maybe they'll finally go up there and fix those swales. But no, now we got another project. Now you guys are gonna spend three quarters of a million dollars of taxpayer money to, it's like bringing a, a nuclear bomb to a knife fight. I mean, it doesn't, it's not necessary. You know, it's no coincidence that a lot of their swales that are going into Kimberly Horn Design are going and right where our swales were that we put in forty years ago. Because we didn't just walk and say, hey, put a soil here, put one there, put one there, put one there. No, it was designed by Charlie True and them definitely in for a reason. And the reason why they wash out because they don't, you know, the reason they wash out, now nobody's catching any water up, up basin. I don't understand this phase one and phase two also. If it's phase one, why is it at the bottom of the basin? And phase two is at the top? You always catch water at the top first. Are they gonna construct it that way? Anyway, if I go to a kid and get a, a kit that says phase one, phase two, you can phase one first and you phase two second, right? Is this logic? What, what is, you're saying it's gonna be constructed all at once. But where do they start? If they start at the bottom, the top is gonna blow it out. That's what's happening right now on Eighth Avenue. That's the reason why there's a, a undercut, I mean, you've got curb on Eighth Avenue uh where Magnolia is. You got a big swell with Charlie True design forty years ago that's never been utilized. All there is is a drain here, the water just gully washes right into it and washes out that corner and washes it on that. It's the same thing at uh, at Bessie Street, uh with the Gulliver House that's a deal with. There, old swales are up at uh Seventh and uh Bessie Street that aren't utilized, that could be fixed. I'm glad you brought up that log because I've been posing this project. Four years ago, Robert bent over backwards and John bent over backwards. They get the residents together, during COVID, we had all those series of Zoom meetings, exhausting, but probably at least half a dozen. And the only carrot that was offered that we, that I, that even changed my mind was the water. I said, okay, well, if I get orange kind of water, at least, you know, like my insurance will go, my homeowners insurance will go down. I won't have to put another twenty thousand dollars well in, but that's gone now. It's just taken out. And then we didn't even find out about it until three weeks ago.
It's not that the water's not gonna happen. The water will happen as soon as.
It ain't gonna happen in my lifetime. I can tell you that.
That's not, that's not so.
I'm seventy-one years old. I'm never gonna see that water.
I think you will.
Let me tell you something.
I'm pretty old.
Here's, Robert did a question and answer uh video when we were doing those uh Zoom meetings. I think it was his, I was just saying, protect our roads, et cetera, right? I don't know what that means, but anyway. About three slides in, it says, how do we keep the balance at the top? You can look it up. It's all on your uh, uh computers, the videos there. This is the arduous path the town staff has been directed to achieve. But as you will see, we have a plan. Establish a maintenance plan on what we have. Reestablish swell systems we have. That never happened. This is three years ago. Train public work staff on means and methods of maintaining not only dirt roads, but also stormwater system. How many training sessions have we had in the last three years, Robert? I'm just curious, public staff. How many, have you had any training sessions for any of theirs? You know my point.
I, I understand.
Yes, actually, we have an engineer.
You're spending three quarters of a million dollars when all you guys do is fix what's up there and I don't get washed out anymore and the road doesn't get washed out anymore. But for some reason, everybody refuses the touch of those things.
Tell you why.
Yes.
You go, you start messing around non-engineered solutions.
They're engineered.
They're engineered. Who said? They were, they were left to do what? It's not just circumstance, but the solution maybe is the same or similar. Because good engineering is good engineering. You guys said yourself, the road has changed three feet.
At the bottom.
If the road. If the road has changed three feet.
Because they keep spilling the dirt up the bottom, putting it up the top.
Right, just, I I wanna help.
Okay.
All of this.
Yeah.
Is. The solution has to be done properly.
Yeah.
We've seen it, we've seen it work, we've seen it done at the other lake beds, the other drainage areas, the other basins. If we don't know, they work very, very well. This too will work very, very well.
This will work very, very well, it's in writing, we said, this is writing, reestablish existing swales.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
It's like, it's 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 in the video, why don't I just?
You didn't send it to me, so I don't have it. So.
Oh, it's mine.
When we, uh, when, well, listen, like you, we've been working on this for the last five years.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah.
A lot of time to this, it's designed to reduce the sediment that goes into the lake.
Yeah.
Most of the people here are very supportive of that, I make sure that we don't flood out those storms down there. The roadbed, we spent tons and tons of time trying to get to a solution that would allow us not to have to follow the F D O T greenboat standards. And we were able to do that, we worked tirelessly to try to come up with ways that minimize the impacts on the town's land itself. To better serve those residents that live there, which include you.
Lake Bessie's just fine, by the way, I talk to Orange County Environmental about every two months, they put that. Care on a skip and Lake Bessie come out with testing, Lake Bessie is cleaner than any lake on the Butler chain of lakes. They tell me that every time they come out, there's no issue with us.
Well, we're not using that way. This is, it's the same, similar design as Charlie True did, I I again, wasn't here when that happened.
It's basically, like I said, they're playing it out.
So without the drop, you can't do it, so anyways, the last time you go and and just engineer or not engineer and just do your your drainage. That's what you end up with, I promise you that, it costs a lot more than seven hundred thousand dollars, I promise you.
Well. I don't like the project, I'm opposed to it, my neighbors are opposed to it, everyone on Ninth Avenue is opposed to it. When I sat up there in that tape, and we sat down here, actually, we went up on the stage. I would never oppose a unanimous neighborhood on some project, I would never shove it down their throats if they were opposed to it. I would try and mitigate it in some way and help them out, I don't think this, I don't like it, the Glances don't like it. That a struggle doesn't like it, just, why don't you, you wanna do a a a Sean Bullock survey, who was in this? Why don't you do a survey with people like Bess, Bessie uh Drainage Station and ask them if they want this? Or if there's any better way to fix.
Then we'll, we'll, we'll. I'll be here to hear from them if that's how they feel, I'll take that into consideration.
I don't think they're taking.
You're certainly being flooded now, we do that.
I appreciate what y'all do out there, I'm just saying that, like, it's no fun, I did it for ten years, I understand it. But I'm just telling what I feel about.
Appreciate it, thank you so much, Nancy.
Nancy Barlow, two two five East North Avenue, um I would just like to add that um. We depend on the website for information, and when we left the meeting October twenty second, which is inaccurate in today's agenda. Three, seven, what's on October twenty sixth, um. We, what was listed under projects and studies under Bessie. Um did not include any plans for phase one, phase two, or um water utilities. So we left the meeting tabled on October twenty second. We said, we've never seen these phase one and phase two plans. And then um low and behold, October thirty first, three links were added to the website. That was the first that we'd seen phase one and phase two. And when you click on the water utility, it takes you to Butler Street, it has nothing to do with Bessie. So I think the information has been inaccurate. Um you all know how long we worked on this since November of two thousand eighteen. Something happened between the last ninety percent meeting and um, I think it was December of twenty twenty one. And then the split happened in twenty three, but we never saw the plans, they were never posted on the website. So I think there's, there's been a lack of communication, transparency. And I know that people in here know how important this is to us, and I just don't think that we received information that we. And then I'd also like to say, um having spent hours in the last week reviewing all of the watch videos. Um every time water was mentioned, the water utility was mentioned, there's gonna be three feet here, there's gonna be three feet here, we're gonna have water run down here, it's gone. So at the October twenty second um meeting, Jonathan Skidit said to me and my neighbor, not having the water in the plan is the first uncertainty, correct?
Well, I think what I said was.
Come to the microphone, Tom.
See, I I think that's, I think that's an important conversation, because. The decision was made by the town based on funding. And yes, it's a new revelation, right, this is where we are, October one is a new fiscal year. And so, well, we're like Robert said tonight, doing it, and and, you know, I stand up here tonight. As both a resident, but also as somebody who, back as you guys, hundreds, hundreds of times. And you guys have walked alongside me, and understood the plans, and understood what we're doing. In two thousand eight, when we built the water Bessie project, it saved plumes going out into the lake. And so the stormwater project we did back in two thousand eight, which had huge plumes going out of the lake, is actually what's saving it. So this town is investing the opportunities to continue to save our lakes. And as I walked alongside you guys, I'm a day to day basis, as both a neighbor. An engineer represented in this town, Phil, I had a meeting with you the other day.
Yeah.
You totally got what we were doing, and then I stand here tonight and hear what you said.
It's not that I totally got what you were doing, I just, I got, I asked you, I asked, I I sort of.
Let me, let me answer that question.
I've never answered on every question I ask.
Well, I I was just.
You're refusing.
I would disagree with that to some extent, but I'm not gonna stand here tonight and argue, but what I am gonna stand here tonight is ask the background to say, we have a hard decision. Got a few residents, maybe not one due to project. The hard decision went to you.
So what I've asked residents when they address the council on this side of this, are they happy with how it is now? Because that's what it will be like if we own a proved project, they will never be better.
No, but we feel, we, I could tell you that we feel. That.
That's what he said.
Since November of two thousand eighteen. Nothing has been done to help our erosion situation because we've got this coming down the pipe. Nothing has happened.
That's not true.
I would say, for a minute, may I, if I can speak for a minute, Nancy, you address something she's saying, so. I've been here since pre Scott Brown, and um, and I'm just going to be honest about what I witnessed, so when I moved here. The the properties that were across the street from me were built, two new houses, that they crossed me, they were constructed in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, finished. Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, by the time they go with another certificate, walking fifteen of them. At the time those projects were built, there was a right away use agreement for their dry play acreage, as well as the swales in the city's right of way. That was under Scott Purview, uh Scott Brown's Purview, he was here at the time that was done. When all of this stuff came out about the Bessie project, and it was discussed, what are we gonna do with the people, what are we doing, gonna do with the swales? Before Tanya was brought on board, those had a shape and a rate, and they were part of a right away use agreement that the town approved. Now, if you go out and you look at those swales across from you today, that were both approved post twenty, twenty eighteen. The one in, directly in front of the closest to the corner, is completely filled in. And it is leveled with the road, whereas that thing used to be a hill, that was fortified feet deep. Went down the slope, across and back up the other side, my daughter used to roll down it because she thought it was, you know, a hill in Florida. Now, over the past forty years, since they started that project and these swales were done, at the time that they were constructed, um and I know this was pre Tanya. But when those swales were constructed, the day they came out and buried the soil before they laid the saw, it was a Friday afternoon, we had a thunderstorm that weekend, completely destroyed the shape of that. I pointed it out to Brad Cornelius at the time, to explain to me that this purview was over the property itself. And that the right of ways fell under the purview of Scott Brown, because they weren't back in the right of way, and they did in fact have a right away use agreement. Nothing was done about it. They were not required to fix those swales, even though they had a right away use agreement, I don't know if it was the town's responsibility. Or if it was the homeowner's responsibility to fix it, at the time of construction, Scott Brown passed it, so I get that. But elevation surveys were required for them to have the right away use agreement for that swell. Between the time that those swales weren't functioning until now. Tom Frye, our neighbor who lives to the south, who owns the property that's having part of the plan that this project is being built. To help them as well as all the other residents, came out several times, I witnessed him, my husband witnessed him, my husband's here as well tonight. And watched that man did a cutout from the road into that swell to make it function. Because it wasn't functioning, and it was not maintained since twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, the bang of which one you're talking about. So you're talking four years, that the town should have been maintaining those swales, and they haven't been, and I know most recently, our council member, Mr. Stru, came out on time. And dug out that to help the water get off the road and into those swales that have not been maintained for four years, that are in fact in the town's right of way. And if you go down to Bessie Park, to the area that's gonna become the retention pond, the one I call, what everyone call it, this triangle one at the uh north part of that park. At the bottom of it, there are two sewer drains, when I'm in here, you could walk down onto the one sewer drain. And you could walk on level land to the other sewer drain, and they were like, I don't know, seven feet deep from the right of the road. And if you go down there now, and you look at it, and I know some of you probably know that because maybe you've been with the residents. That thing has filled in more than five feet deep with sediment, it is not maintained. And the front square sewer, honestly, I forgot that it was the second sewer until I was walking there today, in the front sewer. It has sedimented up so much around it, that they go out and they dig a brush tank. And when you walk down to that pit, you walk down now about three feet, and then there's this square of sand that keeps getting dug out, dug out. With like shell holes on all three sides that are like three or four feet deep. So I, as a homeowner, I think I'm against this project. Um I'm still somewhat against it, because in theory, yes, if it collects all the sediment elsewhere before it gets to that point, that would be great. But what I have seen over the past eight years, and I know that you're coming about, I'm not gonna be here eight years. Is all of these swales fill in and fill in and fill in and fill in, and they're not being maintained. So my concern as a resident is that if we're gonna build all these things in everybody's yards and adjacent to their yards, and I understand it's quote unquote the right of way. But we are required to maintain it, we're required to mow it, and if we don't. Then we can get cited for, because there's an ordinance, it says we have to maintain that property next door, if that grass gets too tall, I don't know that I can get trouble. For it, I can get cold by, it's a hard, that's it, it's the first year I lived here when one of the properties in New York was being constructed. So those, they are not being maintained. I also know that I came to this town, my down in council was November, in January this year, as I had a days on assignment, I went to Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board Meeting of the county. And that was the first that I heard at Second Avenue, because I think Michael R. that presented at that county meeting. That Second Avenue came back with such a high benefit cost ratio, it was a problem. And I'm like, wow, I think they, they got higher value properties there, so I know there are these yards gonna be better than ours, and I came to the meeting and I, and I talked with Robert and I said. What's gonna happen with Bessie and Butler, we don't have the value of properties that they do on Second Avenue, or these projects that they've bought, but we didn't get the D C Rs that we need. And then we started talking about the split for the project, and everybody's saying that this project was split, and I spoke with a couple of people today, and I did go back and figure out. There was an I P O that came before us, Council on April, that talked about project split. I do think there's a severe concern with transparency though, because when you go back and you look at these drawings. And how child already spoke to this this evening, some of these are dated March twenty three, some of these are dated May twenty four. I live in, in the neighborhoods that it's happening, it affects every one of us, and evidently, these drawings, because the split came up two years ago. So why was the first that I'm even hearing about this? In the April meeting that came on the agenda or discussion with Robert, after speaking with, hearing this of the uh, the proposal that was, or doggy pony show, whatever you wanna call it, that was given to, give the, the county. Sorry, Michael R.'s presentation to the Orange County Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board Meeting about the problems with the P C R, and what was gonna happen to Butler and Bessie projects, they were gonna have to split this project. Because clearly, the decision to split the project was made over a year and a half ago, and nobody knew, none of the residents that are impacted in. So it wasn't transparent, and I'm sorry, but while we're doing this.
If you split it into five parts, and do it at the same time, and it's the same project, what, I don't understand.
At the October twenty second meeting last month, I asked if the project would be constructed together at the same time. The response that I got from Robert, and I'm not gonna quote a verbatim, but I pinned, if I go back and look, was that he wasn't sure if he would check the plan, he can get those answers to it by the next council meeting. And I've not heard anything that, of information being provided from that point on. Um and I did get an email from Robert because I said, you know, these, at the meeting last month, I said, these drawings are not on there, there's no final plan, I can't see the hundred percent drawings. And at the council meeting, during the council meeting last month, there was emails that went back and forth, where Robert was asking how child, do we have the latest ones on the website? And Tanya wrote back and said she thought so, and then around eight o'clock the night of the meeting, um it was said that, no, they're not the current ones, the current ones were not on the website. They were not a part of our agenda impact at last month, so nobody can review this, we're not even staying in sunshine laws, and this information isn't being provided. So I get an email on October thirtieth that says, my mistake, which I appreciate acknowledging the mistake, and then the, the drawings would be added to Bess. That that would be added to the Bessie's project study page, and they were, on the thirty first, that's a full week past our council. And everybody likes to say I bring things up at the last minute or something, on October thirty first, I sent an email to Robert, and I said, please. The hyperlink say phase one and phase two, but it's not clear when these were um phase plans were done, please add a date to them, and by the way, what Nancy just spoke to. The Bessie Water Main Plans Project that says is a design project, we can click on it, it opens to the Butler project. So I pointed that out on October thirty first, and said, will you please have this corrected? Because residents are trying to find the information and they're not able to find it. I asked questions in that email about, did you figure out which council meeting the project split was discussed? I know you said some info, you might have to get from door to door, sorry, I don't remember, it was this too. I did not get a reply to the October thirty first email that I sent to Robert. So Friday this past week, I sent another email. And I was trying to make clarification on all these things, because I'm meeting with the residents, because they are the ones that look next to me, and I know they've reached out fifty council members to meet with them. So I sent an additional email on Friday, mind you, it was two o'clock in the afternoon, because I would like to add that lately. Agendas are not being posted seven days in advance of the meeting, this week, or this month, the agenda was not posted until Wednesday night, which is six days, so as far as I'm. Aware, we're in violation of sunshine laws. Okay, well.
We see them on Fridays.
Okay, well, either way, this is a big project, I've been asking for information since last month's meeting, I've been asking for information in an email dated October thirty first. So I sent another email on Friday, when they list some questions about, when are they being constructed, are they being constructed together, because I asked that at last month's meeting, and I still didn't have an answer as of this time Friday. So I get the answer today, at twelve fourteen P M. And Tanya did provide the answers, it was confusing, because when you look at the agenda. It did say, uh and I understand now, phase two, phase one, and you know, that this is what FEMA calls it for their construction and design, and I get that now. But I did not know that coming into this meeting, nor did any of the residents, nor did anybody have time to process this information. I mean, we need to do better with the transparency. Actually, a few years ago, when this all started, I thought we, the town staff did a fantastic job. Robert did the walkthroughs, we did the videos, everybody knew what was happening along the project. He had the public workshop meetings, everything was very clear, it, it was honestly fantastic. But if this project all changed to a split project a year ago, whether it's because of funding or whatever the reason. None of it was communicated to the residents. And as far as the water. This was in the agenda packet. I'm happy to ask, you guys need to look it up for yourself because yes, I know it wasn't part of the agenda packet. The blue line represents the potable water. When we have a last ninety percent drawing, whether this is presented at a ninety percent drawing. The first words are, we're off the top, the first four minutes of that meeting, that for every project we've been working, we're gonna do the potable water if we're going to stormwater projects. I understand funding constraint, I understand inflation happens. But the reality is when a resident sees that line drawn across the page and it says potable water. And How Chow actually spoke to that that night. Saying that we were waiting on the public, um, utilities stuff from Orange County Utilities. And that permits were underway and moving forward already in this, uh, South Porter Water Management District. It was also discussed that this was going through the process. And if everything went according to plan, it would be going out to bid and spring the next year around March. It was perfectly understandable to think that the residents would believe that the potable water was part of the project. How would they not know? Nothing ever came down the pipe to let anybody know who wasn't a part of it. They know why my neighbors received an email that said we already approved moving forward on this project on October fifteenth, was it not true? I'm a staff though. So we need to, we need to do better. I mean, th- these are all valid questions that the residents have. And if we're not transparent having this information on the website, if we're not transparent, you know, coming forward with information. What I asked at last council meeting, two emails that I unanswered. How do you expect the residents to know what's going on and feel confident that the council is being transparent? And where, where the confusion is? So. I, you know, I, I have to stand by my residents with all the confusion and concerns about transparency, it is an issue.
I, I'd just like to finish by saying that we've lived here in town since nineteen seventy five. We love our little piece of heaven. We love the representatives that we elect, we appreciate John. Um, and we just like, whatever happens, we'll survive it. But I don't feel this in an open process, especially since when we walked away from the ninety percent plans in January of twenty twenty one. It is not what we see in phase one and phase two today. Finally, I'd like to ask, when does this money have to be spent? When will these funds run out? And then knowing that with the changes that will probably happen. Um, FEMA's going to be changing their, um, outputs so that it won't be seventy five, twenty five anymore, it'll be twenty five, seventy five. So can you answer those questions?
I, I will tell you this, the Stafford Act is the Stafford Act until it is not. Uh, that addresses the, the match. Can't tell you the exact, uh, what's our funding deadline?
When do we have to have it finished, Hal? On the grant?
This is your grant.
I guess my other question is, size of water. Is fundamentally different. About the final executed project that differs from. Size of water. Potable water.
I don't, I don't, there is any fundamental difference in this storm drain project, I'm not saying that there is. I'm saying that, no, I'm saying, no, I'm not. Don't, don't put words behind option. Uh, so I am saying that the main concern, the first concern that came up with everyone. Was that the potable water was dropped from the project.
Sure.
It is, it is absolutely understandable that the residents were under the impression with everything that was. This is what was voted on, this was in the agenda packet, it was the potable water, but this was approved in twenty eighteen.
No one's disagreeing.
Right, so what I.
I'm asking you, it says, in terms of the stormwater portion of the main emphasis of the project, what were the storm? What is, what is fundamentally different?
The fundamental difference in the design is none. The fundamental difference in the cost that's involved to pay for it has changed, not just because of inflation. But because when this project originally went through, the council approved it, it was all for it. At that time, everyone was under the impression it was a seventy five, twenty five posture. So in my eyes, regardless of what my neighbors say. The potable water dropped from the project, I thought the same thing, and I'm well versed on the project. But I also thought the water, water was part of it and that it was dropped based on what was said at meetings and based on what went through and what was included on the plans that were approved by our council at the time. So that's the water portion. The cost portion changed and it is more cost to the taxpayer dollars. And regardless of my opinion, if you ask my neighbors, would you rather them spend eight hundred thousand dollars on potable water or eight hundred thousand dollars on? Right, you can probably get two different answers. I don't think everybody's in agreement on that. But after the issues tonight, and, and the questions that everybody had, it would have gone a lot smoother. If the answers were provided, if the drawings, I don't, I don't even know why we had a complicated last meeting with an agenda pack that didn't include the plans of what we were approving to spend, you know, almost a million dollars on, but. We need to be more transparent with the residents. So my points tonight are squish the bio retention swales. In the grand scheme of things, I don't have a problem. With the project as it's been worked out, other than that I think that the drainage issues should be treated at the point of the source, which is in the upper basin, which is not where we're at. We're basically conveying all that water from Oakdale Street. Shifting it down to the lake and treating it there from a biological standpoint. I've always said it would be better to have swales along Oakdale catching that water before it ever gets to. But in terms of, you know, I have serious concerns and I've always had serious concerns about how these are going to be maintained. Because if sediment does get in there, what I witnessed is, you know. Properties not being maintained. So if we build a project that doesn't have regular maintenance, then we just wasted taxpayer dollars. So I would really want to improve that maintenance plan and in fact, that what's going on with the right of way use agreements and other things that have existed for a long time that aren't being maintained.
Um, Jane Lance.
You asked for the date.
Oh yes, so in the phase two agreement, there should be a period of performance date, which is the date where you have to complete the construction of the project and close out with FDM. I don't remember the exact month, I believe it was around mid twenty twenty six for completion.
What's the length of the build, estimated that?
Uh, we estimate at twelve days, two months.
Um, Jane Lance, sorry, I don't want to forget anyone. Any Eastern.
I'm better past.
You're, you're good.
I'm a fast time.
Robert, can I ask a couple more questions, please?
I'd like to defer my time.
We don't have to control that for the bill, please come up and ask your questions.
Besides the obvious.
Coming to the microphone so we can get you on the record, sir.
Besides the obvious constitution on what you're telling me about, you know, the existing swales. What Robert put on that video saying, we're gonna re, reestablish.
And all I said was, I don't know what he asked.
Well, I, I, can I come forward? It's on your screen. Like. The video is entitled, Say No to the Grants and Protect Our Roads Question and Answer. It's on the list of videos, I'm sure. You click on it, you'll get to a page where it says, where Robert basically makes my argument. That we establish swell systems we have, maintain, uh, establish a maintenance plan on what we have. So who's right? Are you right that we can't do it, or is he right that we can't do it? He's the town manager, I assume he's right. He's just made the art map and made it for twenty years.
All I, all I said was, if you don't engineer your solutions and they're not.
Okay.
If they're not, if they're not at the levels that they were engineered to be at, and you don't have the drawings and all that, you need to do that. It's not an engineered solution, it may have been an engineered solution. There's an engineer here that will tell me that I'm wrong.
We told him that I have a town manager telling me that it's been reestablished swell that we have. Now, I have no question about phase one, phase two.
Yes.
Why is the FEMA money in the phase two when the most, or? No, the phase one, I. I, I can't, I, I can't digress, who knows what one, one and two?
Because.
One.
The money is phase four.
You gotta, you gotta catch the water at the top of the basin, that's the most important part of the project, right? But that's the part of the project that's not funded by FEMA. So if you guys run out of money and you only do the bottom part of the project, we're at, because that's where the FEMA dollars are.
Let's be clear, no one has, no one has indicated that we're going to do the bottom of the project.
But, but that's where the FEMA money is.
That, because that's where the DCA was. So you do it where you have the DCA, you get the most money you can, you do your match, because you're, you're, you're getting a dollar for a quarter.
So are you shaking?
And you won't get a better bet for a taxpayer than that. Then we'll take care of the upstream portion, we've allocated the funding to do that as a priority and to even do it at the same time. I mean, really, I've, I mean, I understand what your concerns are.
Yes.
But I feel like we're, you know, the, the team has done a really decent job of addressing those concerns. So you're getting everything that you need at the same time, it'll work.
You're not, you're not answering my question.
Why, oh, your question is?
The water is, you have to catch the water at the top of the basin. The top of the basin project is phase two. Is it done with stage two?
Let me, let me help.
Help me out. Okay.
Phase two and phase one are really funding. Correct titles. Well, for, for this kind of question, but we also are being.
I agree, the intent is to bid the whole project, the one contractor, and look at fungibility money to the phase. And so it allows us to set up a proper billing procedure for reimbursement. The contractor that does the project in totality, purple and green, will determine the best places to start. And work this project out. At the end of the day, the intent for the town, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to build everything all at once. Because my system functions as one entity. So please, Bill, don't get caught up on the term phase one, phase two, that's a.
Yeah, you question them.
Sure.
Then, when the project that was done on Eighth Street and Bestie Street. When that project was done, why wasn't the upper basin addressed? Because that's why it's bad, right?
But, but, yeah, so what ended up happening in that project is we had funding, we did the project. We had extra funding, they said what we wanted to do, we did, and then we did it on the base. This is a completely different.
I, I, I know, but that project, the top of the basin was never addressed in that project.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
It's independent, that bill.
All right, council, if you have any questions, please promote your group.
We have our resident that's here that I know.
I just have a quick question to talk to you. We're getting it up and, like, some ditch shade and your address. Yeah, I mean, you went duck.
Yeah. Sure, so, John, it's our, uh, three, two, seven, it's a, that'd be our best name. Um, just curious to know when this project is on the day and what will happen to my ability to get my house? Considering. I, I'm just concerned that once they start construction on that corner, I will have no way to get to my house. And so I'm considering.
Yeah, let's let John address that, because I honestly.
And you know, Bill, that, that's a good question, because there's always something else, because during the logistics of when the project actually does get done. Um, what we do is we'll work with you, and you have a long enough driveway and a, a, a fair enough corner. Typically, we'll work that directly with the people, residents during construction for open ditch. And what we'll do is usually just do like sections at a time, so that we're never wide open ditch, we always do it. By something to allow continued access to residents.
Also, one of the great things about being in a town like this is that you have access to all these, so if you run into anything, you better be someone. All right, council, any additional questions?
Let me take a couple comments.
Yes.
Real quick, there's one, like, you know, my corner over here. They've got part of one of the next projects and I had the same, same questions, exactly the same question. I called Hal, I met with Hal on my corner. And we discussed it, and he answered all the questions that I had prior, prior to meeting with him. Some things I didn't know, some things I assumed, he clarified and I was perfectly happy after that. Um, I talked to Harvey personally, I talked to Travis personally. It's still all, I had the same exact concerns you guys had. And all those questions that I had, asked them directly. And they gave a satisfactory answer, it's matter of fact, they modified a couple of things just to make me happy. So I would say that, and I don't, whether we spend the money, you know, spend the money, that's a whole different question to ask. And that's not the question, do we need to fix a problem? That, that's a real problem, it's like, we, well, yeah, I don't need all the money for, for free, I don't like them, probably just get rent money. I'll be the first to say that. But I will say if there's something we can fix and we can't fix it. I just like to have these face to face, Hal's met me at my house, Robert's met me on the street by the front of my house. Tony's met me at my house several times, playing football on the streets. Travis asked me to ditch out and make this a swell, make this a swell out for me. So I think a lot of this is just communication, sounds like most of these questions could be answered. In a different venue, um, I've never had a problem with anybody answering my calls and me in the street and talking to these out makes a changes. The question I have is, is there a problem and will this fix it? That's what I have. Um, and I don't know the answer to that, because I'm going in a corner. I do think that like Bill said, if you talk to the people, I did, I did dig out that ditch over there one day. Because it's just kind of a walk around the shit, you got down by, I can dig our ditches. But it's because I just saw a puddle in the street and I saw it where I could drink. Doesn't mean it fixed the problem. I did get a ditch in front of my house too, for the same reason, but I do believe. In asking the residents how they watched that water come down the road in the last six years. And the best way they think would be mitigated based on, they probably have a shovel at some point in your life, I dug something out from your house. It's been integrated water, so I would just say it sounds like the project is necessary. And I think a lot of this stuff can be answered with phone calls to people and a face to face conversation. That's been my experience and it worked out pretty well.
I also want to include that. We need, we need seed grant funds to leverage taxpayer dollars to do things that we're not able to do otherwise. Second Avenue is a great example, this project is a great example. There have been many others, the, the, the state school, Trail is a great example of that. You don't seed grant funds just to seed grant funds because obviously it's not always fun. Uh, but what we try to do is smart, take advantage of opportunities that we have to leverage those funds. Buy better and safer services for the town. So I, I just wanted to be clear, because I know there's always a little hesitation with grant funds in the community, and I understand that. Because anytime you accept money, it's always, always rules you. No one just gives you money and says spend it as you like, um, only dads. Uh, but, but, but nobody else, it's always, uh.
There's always restrictions.
It's just part of the game and we have to look at those things and decide whether it's something that makes sense for the town. All right, council, appreciate everybody's, uh, efforts.
I would, I would just say, I would take serious notice of what the people living on that street say. Because it's affecting them the most and I think that, I think that's been telling the impounds. But I think along this process, and I know John does, John talks to all kinds of projects. We know he can do some, you know, lifetime changes we have to, have, so. That is my idea, talk to people who live there.
And Mayor, before we vote, it's one of the things I, I do think that you did address, we spoke out to. Is, Tony, we probably need to look at the level of maintenance we have and the investment we're making in maintenance. We have to do a lot of these drainage projects, I know you've got the, you know, backdrop of an object of maintenance. You, you leaned into that quite a bit, but are enough resources being put inside? Um, so we need to invite the site of the mayor, um, ask you the potable water versus two stormwater, um, projects. In the project meeting, of which I'm the ASO. There's been pre-discussions on this SC project, one is Butler project, one is potable water. At no time have any of those been commented, other than the potential construction facing, uh, as discussed in some of the workshops. So I just wanted to clarify that there now as of going forward.
So I just wanted to clarify that there now going forward. There is some confusion on this project, Robert, um, John, you may want to, you know, take another walk with the, with the hundred percent plan set, just make sure everybody understands what's going in. Um, just so everybody's got the understanding, it's, it's clear to me, uh, obviously, and I walked with Bill on, on Saturday, uh, you know, to still look at the plan set, talk through it. I, I thought I explained all of it, but I guess I'm, I'm not articulate enough to, to get that aspect. This is a couple of.
Uh, you know, I want to say one more thing, I do appreciate that, you know, some of the council members went out and, uh, and, and I think that's great. I think the concern for me was is that, you know, three of the, uh, different members, uh, from the community came from that project area last month. To ask questions, we, we didn't get the answers then. It could have been resolved with a simple either miniature public workshop for those residents to go over all the questions and everything that had come up. Or, you know, answers reacted and meaning to the things people were asking, so that. We weren't, people were really, really stressed out the last couple of days coming up here, I know they met with a couple of council members, myself included, a few times. Um, and then I know John was out to people's houses, and, you know, there was confusion about the six inches and whatever. I think it's great that council went out, but I still think that it should have been, you know, been controlled more by staff and. Either a workshop to have answer the questions all at once for everybody, and then if they wanted to meet with people afterwards, then, then fine, allow, you know, meet with people. But if those clarifications and half of what Hal Child presented tonight would have been explained two, three weeks ago. We would be in a much better state of people not being stressed, and, I mean, there's people that couldn't even make it to the meeting tonight that are all worried about what's going to happen. And I just don't feel that a resident should have to worry like that. So that's the only other thing I would say.
Additional comments, questions, or concerns, council? So you then, then for motion to approve, motion to approve. First, William, second, second councilperson, David. Additional comments, questions, or concerns? Inviting, councilperson's true.
Hi.
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 Nate, because I've never, I've always thought we should control them and not have them in the project, so that's okay.
Motion, uh, is approved, four to one, councilperson names dissenting. Next up, the financial, approved Lobz, Range, and Flexi Pave for Centennial Walkway at Central Park, Parks and Recreation. Um, are we going to present a little bit of?
The Parks and Recreation Committee has been working for some time to contribute projects to the centennial celebration. And tonight, we have two of their items on the agenda this evening. Um, they have wanted to redo the, the walkway at Central Park, it's currently asphalt, but if you've ever been out there, it's, it's not a very safe path anymore. People to run and walk on, so they had always been talking about the idea of looking at some kind of board in place product, something like that. So the tree board members actually went to a tree conference and came back with a new product called Flexi Pave, which allows the water to trickle through. Um, and it's a, a good product, something that's environmentally friendly, and something that will stand out better for the walking and the running of the track was intended for. As part of that process and talking about what we could do for the centennial committee, we thought it'd be a wonderful idea to actually create this as a centennial walkway. Uh, and the Flexi Page contractor was able to figure out a way to actually make a medallion of the centennial logo and be able to embed that in the walkways. But forever, it will be the centennial walkway. So I'm bringing it here this evening because it does exceed the threshold for the town manager to approve, it comes to the level of town council. It is a sole source, because Flexi Pave is a sole source product, and the only, um, vendor that can install it here in our area is Lobz, Range, and Flexi Pave. So we are asking you to go ahead and approve that, because we are wanting to ensure that we get all these things done in time for the centennial celebrations and get these things underway. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Now, so you guys, this made in, I mean, you, the rubber is, are you rubber tracking?
Yeah, it's recycled, so, yeah.
Should have brought that P C M.
I know, I should have, shouldn't I? I could have passed it around, it's on my desk.
It's on. Store, you know, warranty of that.
Yes, yes, they do, and I will be sure to get you that information on what that warranty is. Um, we also looked at another port in place product, which was more than ten thousand dollars more than this product, and that did not include a customized logo in it.
This is for the perimeter track around.
Yes, yes.
So it's, I don't think it'd be good.
Yes, and the committee has, committee has quite a bit of the money towards it, and then the centennial committee's been so gracious with their funding to help with these projects.
Council, any additional questions? For motion to approve? Representative, councilperson Williams.
Hi.
So, and, and councilperson. Inviting, councilperson names.
Hi.
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 Bye.
Bye. Next up is approved representative services purchase for memorial bench programs, also for a centennial celebration, it's the piggyback school district, piggyback country school district, and that's.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So the second item of the Parks and Rec Committee wanted to pursue for the centennial was what originally started as a memorial bench program, but they prefer the idea of a legacy bench program. So that it might not just be a memorial, it might just be a legacy bench that somebody purchased for their family. So we're calling it the Legacy Bench Program, we can piggyback the Manatee County contract, we can get those twelve benches, they've got a whole plan to promote where these locations will be. I've already got the concrete concrete structure coming out to give surprises to course labs, because what we have in the parks now is benches that were put on non-slabs, and they're not holding up very well. So we want to make sure we'll have slabs with these, so they have a whole program in the committee to, to promote this. And the idea is that somebody will adopt a bench, so really, the money that's being expended today will be recouped in that.
I'll, I'll only have one question, could I have my legacy bench on Flexi Pave? Sold or?
I'll have to look about, I'll have to look at, keep that's positive there.
Sometimes I fall off the bench.
Yeah.
All right, should. Council, any questions for Tony? Councilperson Dave, would you like to make a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second, much improved, second, uh, councilperson David, inviting councilperson's true.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, council. Urban Mayor and DA's on reports, see, we've been busy, we had a great, uh, a great Veterans Day celebration. Very nice, uh, councilperson David, and a great, uh, presentation on veterans issues. Well, well, now we have a car show, we have a judge's car show, and everybody left with a trophy, so, uh, it's kind of a team all. Any additional?
I was saying. Um, um, the, the park's already asking me this in light of, you know, the boat would get, get swayed. Good evening, councilmembers, I am pleased to announce that earlier this evening, the council officially approved the Legacy Bench Program as part of our ongoing celebration of the town when there's a town. This initiative will allow members of our community to contribute to the council and see by adopting benches, we can replace two key areas throughout our public space. Additionally, I bring in access from our Parks and Rec Committee, they wanted to inform the council of their goal to eventually replace some of the swings into our parks. These improvements reflect our ongoing commitment to create safe, welcoming, and well-maintained recreational areas for our residents. And a special gesture of gratitude, Eddie is looking at adopting the, the new swings in honor of two long-serving retired members, Maro Ropey and Tracy Mitchell. Both more interesting that contributed so much to our communities throughout their dedication and hard work. Honoring their legacy in this way feels like a, a fitting tribute to their enduring impact on our parks and our town as a whole. Thank you to the Parks and Rec Committees that are visioning for this maybe when you're a wonderful people.
Very nice, thank you. Councilperson David.
Public Works Mayor, so, um, last Thursday, I attended the useful advisory commission for Metro Plano, I know, uh, where they updated the F D O T transportation program. Like, in fact, uh, time we've been here just yet, working on it. And then, uh, last week as well, uh, my, they, for our preservation board, they're working on their contribution to the centennial celebration, uh, more to follow on that.
Dates, uh, they're in the process, so December sixth, holiday month, uh, starts about five o'clock. And then the following Tuesday. We had a council also, but we will have, uh, the Albert's Luncheon at eleven thirty, you have a good lunch.
My chance to plan December?
Uh, December tenth.
December sixth, that much, I'm gonna.
Uh, five o'clock.
Any additional, uh, reports?
Yeah, you should, uh, get about an invasion, uh, already.
Uh, the tree board, uh, they met last month, they talked about forming a subcommittee to start working on changes to the coordinates and the big costs. Um, this is something they're planning to do a deep dive into the strategic plan, to figure out which things they're planning to work on first. Um, staff meeting for the school, I've been really, I've been there, I'll give it the best three something that the, you know, are moving forward, we're trailing the bridge, because they're all anxious about that. And Butler, Chain Lakes, and Advisory Board meeting really just kind of discuss the, uh, condition of the lakes and how long they think it's going to take for them to go down, and it'll probably be a couple, four months of, you know, restrictions on. The programs being open, so. Oh, and on that note.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have a fence that's broken down right now on Lake Bussie Park, and people are using to put those in that way, because they don't need to confuse it, so we can get those next.
Those panels were just delivered Friday to my staff, we've been having difficulty sourcing those, but we did get the order on Friday.
That's it for that.
Jim, this is just Dan. Where did he, he, he just back checked this line. Aaron's ready here, so I'm sorry, I think neither did I, but you, you or someone mentioned the fact that we had eighty-one percent plus voters in the last election to include mail-in early in the same neighborhood, very participation.
That is impressive, that's, that's what you wanted, I didn't know that.
Thank you, Karen, probably listening now. He didn't, and, and we appreciate all those who volunteered, uh, to run the hard record for recently.
Yeah, and she also helped out, she got out the, uh, survey, she wrote the draft, she sat out there and, uh.
All day.
She said six thirty, they opened the door, they had sixty, some people in line, everyone filled it out, so she was putting it out there. I think they've got.
But I was just on today, I just told you that we have two hundred or so, what would be, two hundred or so unique submissions from the town residents, five non-town, my close friend.
Close, yes, we have a hundred and ninety-eight total responses to this survey, five were outside, had this from the town. And, um, we had, um, a few we had to swap, I because of, saying, this one. Of the hundred and ninety-eight that we got, um, a hundred and fifty-nine of them were probably the town had this.
That's out, see, I mean, uh, yeah.
We gotta really do that.
How long were you gonna hold it up?
He closed it on.
He closed it on Monday at seven A M, and we can open it back up again.
Actually, two fifty, I mean, we got thirteen hundred residents there about.
I'm impressed.
You know, that twenty, thirty percent number, it's a little bit more to put on there, because the shred that we have is great. Except we missed, we didn't have a single family member that was in their forties of kids there.
True, and, and unfortunately, it's not, it's not a squirrel, yeah.
Yeah, that's area of that. Yeah, so, making sure we get the word out to, um.
Go this one, if, if it's sent in for a little bit longer.
Yeah.
We can, well, we, well, I'm.
I'd like to see, okay, so we did like, uh, two fifty, I mean, it's not that much further. But just looking at, you know, we got population of packs to get to thirty percent of it.
And.
And to see, because I know the, I mean, get the hookler group out, they passed out around two, um, two town residents.
Right.
A bit of that.
Is it, you're bringing it back with the results, and remember, would you be able to still have the time to go to like Thanksgiving?
Well, we're, right, right now, we're scheduling to bring back the results of the survey and the shirt to you all at your workshop next week.
Okay.
Is what we ought to, well, we can, I mean, we could still do that with the information we have at that point.
And they, there, there is no.
So, I told you.
Cancelled it.
Oh.
We canceled it.
Be back, but, so, yes, I, by that, I.
Twenty, one or twenty.
Oh.
I got, no, no, it's the twentieth.
He, he's talking about the, uh, the public outreach.
Yeah.
Not, not a town council workshop, but it's a public outreach for the town hall improvements.
That's, yeah, so that on the twenty.
November twentieth.
November twentieth, so we, yeah, we're gonna be on that, so what we can do, reopen it up, like, report out the results as of then, but put that together like a town.
I, I will say that's, for your parents' sake, I don't imagine schools are gonna have a huge group of, you know, parents in there.
All, all we're doing with that is just reporting out what we got, we're not making recommendations, we're not making, we're just looking for, you know, the council, what you all see is important, let me see that, we got it.
And as long as the appearance isn't that we're keeping it open to the against it that we want, it's just trying to get more participation, because I just know how conspiracy theories work. Get full, you know, I can have a room.
Scary shit.
No, it's like, well, if you give me as you want, and so you keep it all, yeah, so.
Both are, I don't care, I'm just, you know, I'm saying.
The what being, the twentieth is the town hall session, because on the, on the. Goes from the way it's on the nineteenth, tree board on the twenty-first.
Yeah, that's super, this, they still have one's Thanksgiving. Yeah, I have the money down there, and then also, I believe Willie was supposed to post it today, if not tomorrow, that they didn't back it out. Six P M.
We'll put it up for another meeting, just get some more, but we'll still report out, yeah, it's all.
Thank you, sir. Start the words.
Yes, sir, then November twenty, at six P M, we'll have the town hall public meeting. Uh, November twenty-second, um, councilmember David and I had a meeting with Rotary about the McCree invoices. The budget amendment report that we were trying to get scheduled for the workshop this month, we didn't have availability, so we're gonna go ahead and push that to December. And that'll be the same time we talk about the golf cart IPO. We're currently monitoring another storm system in Caribbean, um, it's, all the models are kind of going in the same direction, which is very scary, but we're looking at possibly something on Tuesday or Wednesday, Mayor.
Actually.
Yes. Um.
Let's make it your floor, because it's the evening.
Yeah. So, another thing is, I was elected to the West Orange Chamber Board of Directors. I didn't even know that I was nominated, but I was informed that I was elected, so I guess the, wow, induction's gonna be on, um, December fifth. And then I'm currently gonna be working on a meeting with the church to go with forced, uh, access, and then, again, we just talked about the shirt survey. And I do want to state that, you know, a policy of mine that I've always pretty much hoped to stick to is never, um. Getting into combative discussions with members of the public when they say their piece, but I had no conversations that I'm aware of that would say, you can remove the gate, it's private property. That would not be the discussion I have.
I. I don't think we can do that, so, you know, we'll, we'll work it out, and it'll work out in a fine way, we can, we negotiate wealth, we have a lot of trust between church and the town, and the town and church, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I want to make an announcement on is that my team's been working over here this week to get the cafe lights and all of the outlets ready for the holiday lighting. The holiday lighting company will be here this week to begin that process of putting the lights up.
The only thing that I have is next Tuesday, we're conducting praying, the previous teaching work of genius, and we're also recruiting low life.
And we're also recruiting low-life, so the council law is open to attendance, next Tuesday, one to nine.
You see, we don't, we don't really say this real speech, and someone, there's somebody up. The officers that I talk to every day, I, is that possible?
I mean, it would be a freedom speech, I don't think that's how we would, uh, address it. It's definitely not a crime, but speaking here is definitely a crime, um, not, uh, the hand gesture would not be.
Yeah.
I feel definitely more professional than that.
And I think that. Okay. She's like, I got it, I don't care. Sorry.
I just want to remind everybody qualifying coming up, December tenth through January eleventh.
I'm very. So we need the door down. Yeah, one part of that, get me out here.
If anybody needs any help, let me know, the pack's already, so I'll be on online as well. And and remind us, we do have to, to return the form T V four, okay, right, or petition in the year, or any line. Or must come out with a petition before you can do anything. Any questions?
I'm just.
Yes, we thought, so we're looking to be signed again.
Anything else would be good if you were dismissed, all right, we are determined eight fifty-one.